And that wonderful document they put together. And if you watch, uh, To this evening's city council meeting, I will call to order in the meeting and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Mayor Stewart?
Here.
Councilmember Kovar?
Here.
Councilmember Dibala?
Here.
Councilmember Kostik?
Here.
Councilmember Siemens?
President.
Councilmember Smith? Councilmember Circe?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you very much. This evening, we are joined by Reverend Gail Fisher Stewart, who is the chaplain for our police department. And since she was joining us this evening for our work session on the police department, and given the times that we are facing right now in our country, I thought it would be a good idea to ask her to give an opening statement for us all this evening. So Reverend Fisher Stewart?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you, Mayor Stewart. These are indeed interesting times in which we find ourselves. On this day, Wednesday, this date, the seventeenth, this month, June, at this hour, five years ago, Dillon Roof walked into Mother Emanuel African Methodist Episcopal Church in Charleston, South Carolina, and was welcomed into their Bible study. The soon-to-be victims of white supremacist hate did not fear a white face. Dillon Roof waited for the hour or so until they were to end, and then he murdered nine members of that group as they stood to pray. After telling one of the survivors that he was letting her live so she could tell the story, he just as casually walked out as he had walked in. On Friday, we will also commemorate Juneteenth, that day, June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, when the enslaved in Texas found out that they had been free for two and a half years, but that the enslavers had stolen yet another two and a half years of their life and labor. The tentacles of white supremacy and systemic racism along and entwine each and every one of us. And if our children and our grandchildren are to have a different future, one in which skin color does not determine life chances, we must listen to those who are on our streets crying out for a change, because there can be a change if we admit that this country is racist. Once we admit that truth without thinking of ourselves as bad people, we will be able to create a future for the next generations that will make real the ideals embedded in the founding documents of this country. If we miss this opportunity, I fear we will not get another one, at least during my lifetime. Again, good evening, everyone, and I wish you a very productive meeting.
Thank you very much, Reverend, and thank you so much for joining us this evening. Tonight, we do have a number of proclamations, and I'd like to actually start with the one for this Friday, Juneteenth. As Reverend Fisher Stewart just spoke about it, I will read it aloud. Whereas the first enslaved Africans were brought as captives to what is now the Commonwealth of Virginia in sixteen nineteen, and whereas black people were bought and sold as slave labor for two hundred and fifty years and suffered unspeakable acts of violence, and whereas President Abraham Lincoln first issued the Emancipation Proclamation effective January first, eighteen sixty-three, freeing the enslaved people in the South. However, Southern slave owners ignored that order. On June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, Union soldiers arrived in Galveston, Texas, and enforced the president's order, freeing the enslaved two and a half years after it was first decreed. This day has since come to be known as Juneteenth, and whereas other systems of oppression such as sharecropping, Jim Crow, redlining, and mass incarceration, and the police violence against black bodies continued throughout our country's history and perpetuated the racist legal and social systems that persist to this day. And whereas the city council recognizes the history of racism in our country and how it has led to many current-day disparities in education and job attainment, housing and healthcare, as well as disproportionate incarceration rates for black people. Now therefore be it resolved, I, Kate Stewart, Mayor of the City of Tacoma Park, Maryland, on behalf of the city council, staff, and residents, do hereby recognize Friday, June nineteenth, twenty twenty, as Juneteenth, to acknowledge the historical significance of the day and recommit the city to working toward the dismantling of institutionalized racism.
Thank you.
Thank you. In addition, tonight, we have a mayoral proclamation for Pride Month in twenty twenty. This is just June. Whereas in June of nineteen sixty-nine, patrons and supporters of the Stonewall Inn in New York City staged an uprising to resist the police harassment and persecution to which LGBTQ plus Americans were calmly subjected, this uprising marks the beginning of a movement to outlaw discriminatory laws and practices against LGBTQ plus in the United States. And whereas the first Pride March in New York City was held on June twenty-eighth, nineteen seventy-one, on the one-year anniversary of the Stonewall Uprisings, and whereas lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer Pride Month is celebrated each year in the month of June to honor the nineteen sixty-nine Stonewall Uprising in Manhattan. And whereas June twentieth marks the fiftieth anniversary of the annual LGBTQ plus Pride traditions, and whereas Pride Month is a time to recognize and celebrate the impact of the LGBTQ plus individuals locally, nationally, internationally, and the freedom to be themselves. And whereas events include pride parades, picnics, parties, workshops, symposia, concerts, and more, and attract millions of participants around the world, and memorials are held for those members of the community who have been lost to hate crimes or HIV/AIDS. And whereas the Trump administration recently removed protections that prohibit discrimination in healthcare against transgender patients, and whereas the City of Tacoma Park is a welcoming city that is dedicated to fostering acceptance and welcome of all residents and preventing discrimination and bullying, and whereas the City of Tacoma Park is strengthened by and thrives upon the rich diversity of racial, ethnic, cultural, general, and sexual identities of its residents. Now therefore, I, Kate Stewart, Mayor of the City of Tacoma Park, Maryland, on behalf of the council, residents, and staff proclaim June twenty twenty as LGBTQ plus Pride Month. And I do have to say that we did write this resolution, thank you to Councilman Kostik, before the Supreme Court decision this week. And so this Pride Month, we actually have something to also celebrate. And finally, our last proclamation for this evening is for World Refugee Day on, that is coming up, the end of this week. Whereas World Refugee Day is an annual commemoration adopted by the United Nations in two thousand to honor and raise awareness of refugees, and whereas the City of Tacoma Park is a welcoming city that celebrates the growing diversity of its residents and acknowledges that refugees, immigrants, and all newcomers enhance the culture and the economy, and whereas more than seventy million displaced people have been forced from their homes worldwide more than any time in the recorded history, including over twenty-five million refugees. And whereas refugees are people who have fled their country because they have a well-founded fear of persecution because of their race, religion, nationality, political opinion, or membership in a particular social group, and whereas resettlement provides safe haven when refugees cannot return home and cannot rebuild their lives in the country they fled due to lack of access to safety, shelter, healthcare, education, or protection. And whereas the City of Tacoma Park is home to a diverse population of refugees and immigrants, adding to the economic strength and cultural richness of our community, and whereas residents of Tacoma Park aspire to live up to our highest societal values of acceptance and equity and treat newcomers with decency and respect, creating a vibrant community for all to live in. Now therefore, I, Kate Stewart, Mayor of the City of Tacoma Park, Maryland, on behalf of the council, residents, and staff proclaim June twentieth, twenty twenty, as World Refugee Day. Thank you. And those are all our proclamations for this evening. We have no change to our agenda tonight, looking at our meeting schedule moving forward. Next week, on Wednesday, June twenty-fourth, we have our regular meeting at seven thirty PM on Wednesday night. Our work sessions that evening will be a Grants Review Committee report and recommendations for FY twenty-one grants, a recap of the twenty twenty legislative session and discussion of legislative priorities, that's the state legislature, and an election update. On Wednesday, July first, again, we will meet at seven thirty on Wednesday evening. Our voting session will be a single reading ordinance awarding FY twenty-one community grants. Our work session tentatively is our Tree Canopy Goal and Tree Ordinance Amendments, and we will have an update on the election as well. On Wednesday, July eighth, we have tentatively scheduled for our voting session, resolution adopting the Tree Canopy Goals and the first reading ordinance amending the Tree Ordinance. Our work sessions for July eighth will be a budget amendment for FY twenty-one election ordinance and discussion of library extension designs. And that is our agenda for the next couple of weeks. Now we'll be moving on to public comments. First, we would have public comments on voting items. Not seeing any public comments on voting items, we will now turn to general public comments. Each person will have three minutes for public comments, except I just think there was one resident who requested additional time earlier today. And I think the first person is Ms. Emily Shacter, if I'm pronouncing that correctly. Yes, hi Emily.
Hi. So, sorry, I wasn't expecting to talk, but our neighborhood is, I'm sure all of Tacoma Park is particularly interested in how Tacoma Park can take leadership in the issue of police brutality and police reform. And so although this is a county and statewide issue, we would like to see our progressive city take some stands and leadership on how to promote change, you know, on police issues in the county and the state, and then take leadership across the country. So last night, we had a great session with the members of the state delegation, and so it's clear that we are so lucky to live in District Twenty, where we really have leadership, including you, Mayor Stewart, and our council. So our neighborhood wanted to see several things. One is to make sure that our Tacoma Park police are behaving according to the standards that we would expect. So even amongst us, we still have black people in our town who are racially profiled by our police, and of course, we'd like to see that end with additional training and better hiring practices. We've also noticed that our police have more of an ominous presentation to the public, for example, wearing riot kinds of gear or kits in order to protect themselves, but also to sort of present a position of force. We have black police cars instead of white police cars. We have black uniforms instead of lighter colored uniforms. And so we'd be interested to know if there'd be a possibility to have the police, instead of having such an ominous presentation, actually have a more neighborhood and civilian-friendly presentation. And this is, of course, not just to our citizens, but our residents and the people who passed through Tacoma Park. And I think that's, that's the essence of what we would like, basically, to have our city take leadership in the county and the state, and have our state take leadership in the country over issues of police reform and ending police brutality. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we had Ms. Mary Jane Machui. Is she with us yet?
She is not with us yet.
We'll come back. And then, Satilla, is she? I'm not sure I'm pronouncing that correctly.
Yes, that's me.
There you are. Thank you.
Hi, yeah, my name is Satilla Velazquez, and I'm a Ward Three Tacoma Park resident, a housing organizer in DC, and a second-generation daughter of immigrant.
Oh, Satella.
And in solidarity with the Black Lives Movement, I am asking that the, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can. You pause for a second, but go ahead.
Can you hear me? I was saying that in solidarity with the Black Lives Matter movement, I asked that the council work towards defunding the police and reinvesting in community programs such as housing, mental health resources, and frankly, any community resources and programs that other programs are better equipped and trained to provide that support than, than with coercion and violence. And yeah, I'm curious to see what, if any, conversations have been happening among the council in like reimagining public safety. I know I've seen Mayor Kate Stewart tweet some articles around like defunding the police, and yeah, I truly, I truly see Tacoma Park as a leading progressive and would like to see the place in the place I All home and community to really take a step forward in the right direction, and black community members saying that they've been profiled by their own white community members, asking whether they live here or not. And yeah, I think that, you know, it's unfortunate that the deaths of the murders of black people, black trans people have really initiated, initiated these conversations to start rethinking what, what public safety looks like, but I think that these conversations have been going on way before this. They've been going on, you know, by Angela Davis, Mariam Kaba, who are in the field of community care. Yeah, I, I would like to see the council work with its community members, its constituents, to work towards a vision that a community can, can really form and, and make a reality.
Thank you so much for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we have Joshua Hoffman.
Yes, hello, thank you. Thank you to Emily and Satella for speaking so far. I'm speaking up today also in support of defunding the Tacoma Park Police Department and averting that funding to education, healthcare, youth services, housing, and other community investments. Tacoma Park could be a very good example to the rest of the country of how this works and works effectively. It definitely takes more than this discussion and research. We do need action on this immediately. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hoffman. Let's see, and Mary, Mary Jane hasn't joined us yet. Valentina?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Great. I'm also speaking on behalf of defunding the police for Tacoma Park. I don't understand why it's necessary to have a nine-million-dollar budget for forty-three police officers in our small county. We have a, there's a petition out for, that we have almost four hundred signatures of people who also agree to defend the police and reinvest in community efforts, especially beyond Main Street. As you know, Tacoma Park is somewhat segregated in that, you know, our Main Street is, is more of a white clientele, and there are other parts of Tacoma that are forgotten and also racially profiled. It's unfortunate that that's the way it is, since Tacoma has the ability to be such a progressive and leader in, in making a true city where people are not afraid for the life from these policemen. The example where the police officer was taking down flyers in early June and did not believe in Black Lives Matter, and while there were apologies, that's not enough, because the way that police officer behaves is the behavior of most police officers, even in Tacoma Park, and that's just not acceptable. So it, there needs to be some movement towards being the spokesperson for the rest of the United States, saying that we don't need police in our Tacoma Park because we're a community that cares about each other and we want to find alternatives to helping each other as a true community, and we have every ability to be able to do that. Also, the type of, and your hiring practices for the police officers that you have, they're not trained well, there, it's a minimum high school diploma. It's very confusing what exactly goes into those people, being able to then have so much power over the rest of the citizens here. So I encourage you to check out the petition that is out there for defunding Tacoma police, and I'm looking forward to having conversations to getting rid of them totally, because we really don't need them in our community. And that's all I have.
Thank you so much for speaking this evening. Next, we have Tom Gagliardo. Yeah, there's Tom.
You got it right. I value the comments of the previous speakers. I want to add two things to the discussion regarding reformulating policing, and I trust that that's what the mayor and council intend to do. The first thing I'd like to say is that changing policy is obviously critical, but all the changes in policy don't mean anything unless the police supervisor on the street enforces the policy. I would be glad to discuss with Chief Dival, who I think is an excellent chief, how that might be achieved, but if corporals and sergeants, watch commanders don't say to the officer on the beat, "That's not our policy, you didn't do it right, you're subject to consequences because of it," then all the good policy in the world really doesn't amount to very much at all. Secondly, I would like to suggest that at some point, citizens, residents, people, civilians, however you want to describe, non-police officers, sit down with officers and view some of the videos that we've all seen on TV and discuss what we see and what the appropriate response is. I want to know how police officers view various incidents that we've all been shocked by, and I'd like to share my views with them. So in a very long discussion about how we reformulate policing, I'd like those elements to be included in the discussion. Thank you very much for the chance to address you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming this evening. Next, we have Susan Miller.
Mayor Stewart, Mary Jane Machui has joined us.
Okay, we're gonna Mary Jane first and then Ms. Miller. Ms. Machui, I'm not sure we can hear you. Ms. Carpenter, can we turn on? Yes, we can. We can hear you now. Go ahead.
Thank you. I thank you for listening, Juneteenth, as, thank you as commemorating Juneteenth. For the scrimmative holiday. I guess not a holiday, but Well, an event, but thank you. And I just wanted to say, I thought, is Chief Dival speaking tonight?
I just wanted to say, I thought, is Chief Dival speaking tonight?
Yes, Ms. Machui, he will be.
Because I'd be interested in speaking with him. Or listening to him, I should say.
Yes, he'll, he'll be up later this evening in a work session.
Yeah, he'll be, he'll be up later this evening.
All right, feel free to call me in between time if we need to talk. I'm here if you want to call me. Should have myself. Feel free to call me.
Thank you. I've noticed sometimes with the police that on a minor event, they have about five police cars coming. I mean, one time There's a disconnect between me on my iPad and here, I'm sorry. But anyways, I, one time, there was a resident in an apartment who was low in But anyways, I, one time there was a resident in an apartment who was low on oxygen and they had it.
Ms. Machuie, do you want to turn off the sound on your iPad and then we can restart? Yeah, why don't you do that? And then we'll start you over again. How's that?
I don't know how to turn it off. I'm sorry. I don't know how to turn it off. I'll just turn off the iPad. I'm sorry. I'm not technologically advanced.
We're all learning. It's all.
And, and, and why, why are they? Why would there be four police cars, an ambulance and a fire truck? Because someone is low on oxygen. I'm sorry.
That's okay, Ms. Machuie. Do you, you know, you can always, as the police chief said, you can always call him and. Talk to him directly or talk to myself directly if there's another time that's more convenient for you.
Thank you.
All right, you have a good evening. Thank you. Okay, so now we'll go to Susan Miller.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Sue Miller, Ward Three. For many years, Councilman Smith has urged us to face structural racism and to test our commitment. To the idea that Black Lives Matter. It's now time to reinstate racial equity impact statements for all city actions. The statements need to be based on a transparent, public rubric created and applied by black and brown residents. Tonight, I'm going to cite two examples of actions requiring immediate remedial action. First, apply a racial equity lens to Laurel Avenue. In our rush to reopen, we have given away public space for those who can afford restaurants. Excluding those who cannot with ropes and metal fencing. Calling this a community patio and declaring everyone is invited is false. Why didn't we put in public tables and chairs? Instead, we made the heart of our town more exclusive, richer, whiter. And we have made life harder for the elderly and people with disabilities, many of them people of color. By forcing them to cross a line of traffic and go past people eating and drinking and not wearing masks. To get to our federal post office. This would appear to be illegal based on the ADA. It certainly moves us in the wrong direction on racial equity. Two weeks after we asked for these changes. I look forward to hearing tonight when the public tables will be added and the handicap parking space restored. If the city cannot afford tables, we will donate them. The residents who are most vulnerable to the pandemic may not feel safe right now sitting in the street without masks. But that doesn't make it equitable to take away public space for the rest of the year under the cover of pandemic response. Second, applying a true racial equity lens to what happened with Black Lives Matter flyers. Reveals that temporarily lifting the flyer ban is inadequate. If people of all races cannot even protest with flyers, there is little hope for systemic change. Also, we need to see an accurate description on the website of the signs that were pulled down. The statements there do not align with the edited transcript now released by the police department. For which transcript I am thankful. There's no evidence that any sign incited violence or that the officer only pulled down violent signs. Right now, it seems police respond to any resident who calls in something they deem threatening or inflammatory. This was not a one bad apple situation. It's a system that urgently requires reorganizing and shifting resources to unarmed community care. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. Great, thank you. Our next speaker is Paul Hubner. Mr. Hubner with us?
I'm here, but I don't see me on the screen. That may be up to Jesse. It says the host is. All right, there we go. Thank you. Can you see me and hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Paul Hubner, Ward Three. Good evening. Thanks. First, I want to commend the goals of so many of our residents to condemn racism. And work towards its end by strongly asserting that Black Lives Matter. And a special shout out to the youth who once again are leading the way. I want to say that the struggle against racism is more than the individual and personal struggle to change hearts and minds. We must change the system. Our police department is modeled on and part of a system of racial injustice. Our police department is modeled on that of New York City, the LAPD, and guided by FBI training and methods. This model is based on militarism and hierarchy. It is adversarial and many times irresponsible. And in the, as in the fear for their life clause used by so many police who have killed black Americans. I recommend that you take seriously the cry to defund the police. What is a city of seventeen thousand doing with a nine million dollar police budget that accounts for thirty percent of our budget anyway? This city council is following the policing model that has murdered minorities from Native Americans to black Americans to Asian Americans. Follow the lead of Derek McKesson of Campaign Zero and enact eight can't wait. Create a civilian review board with no police. Follow the lead of the mayor of Atlanta and the governor of Minnesota and cut the funding of military style culture. And the internal hierarchy that propagates and sustains it. Completely eliminate the emergency response team. Their ten thousand dollars of dedicated supplies and their three hundred and sixty hours of training. This unit has served but one search warrant and had a single barricade incident for all of twenty nineteen. We should also eliminate the special assignment team. As even New York City has done. Put an end to the military model because we need to send more than a message. We must enact change. Defund the police and its military minded system of war on black and brown people. And I'd like to just coincidentally add that. In terms of what the one person said about uniforms, I'm suggesting powder blue uniforms to the police and pink clown cars.
Great, thank you, Mr. Hubner. Next, we have Mr. Schlegel and he requested five minutes.
Good evening. I'm Roger Schlegel, Allegheny Avenue, Ward Three. Can you hear me okay? Okay, I'm speaking for myself, but I'm also representing many views on behalf of Community Vision for Tacoma. Which has been pushing for racial equity and inclusive development in our community for the last several years. My first impression of the police came when my kindergarten class in DC received a visit from Officer Friendly. That was a long time ago. But it strikes me lately that it's been a long time since I had an encounter with a true officer friendly here in Tacoma Park. This may be mainly because it's been at least ten years or more since I even had a conversation with a police officer. Aside from one community barbecue to which we invited the chief a few years ago, not our current police chief. At the time, I was struck by the fact that he proactively approached most of the white residents. Who were at our Pine Crest neighborhood gathering, but he never introduced himself to a single person of color. This was the same chief who I saw snickering with five other officers on our street while they interrogated and demeaned. A black pedestrian whom they'd stopped on suspicion of shoplifting. These are my impressions and they, there are few and far between and they come from a white male homeowner. The Black Lives Matter movement makes clear that others have more frequent and often intimidating encounters with police. I've spoken recently with a black business operator in my Pine Crest neighborhood who believes he's been harassed repeatedly by Tacoma Park officers on New Hampshire Avenue. And cannot get a response to his complaints. There are many other people who I'm sure can share more direct. And meaningful impressions of our police officers and who can speak to the question of what defunding our police force. Or maybe we should call it a service, please, might look like. I would simply like to point out that the issue being so rightfully raised about our police. Can be viewed as a problem of failed human relationships. There's clearly a lack of trust. And it's not something that the chief's advisory board, which is by design not an oversight committee, can resolve. Very briefly, for a healthy relationship to exist between police and the residents they serve. Here's some basic obvious things that a community needs. First, we need to know and measure the department's objectives. One out of three dollars in our city budget goes to the police, yet. Having pored over the budget for six weeks recently, I really don't think we know enough about the department's measurable objectives. And its data collection to be able to evaluate their performance and determine how much of a police force we need. Counts of traffic stops and numbers of trainings are the kinds of performance measures that our budget provides. And they fall short of really measuring anything useful. Knowing what our police service actually does and why is the first step toward building a healthier and friendly relationship. Even more importantly. The way to re, to build real relationships, as we've all experienced over the last three months. Is to stand outside on the street and talk to each other. Our police, in my experience, are visible ninety-five percent of the time in their cars through tinted windows cruising by. This is not an egalitarian encounter. I find it intimidating myself from the skin I'm in. For years, people have been asking that the police please get out of their cars and talk to us like human beings. We have bike and foot patrols, but I did the math and for all of FY twenty-one. Our police force intends to achieve just thirty-five hundred hours of foot or bike patrols. This is the equivalent of one point seven five full-time equivalent positions out of an operations force of twenty-nine. In other words, the average officer intends to spend just six percent of their time, two hours and twenty-four minutes. On foot or on bicycle during a forty hour week. I can ride my bike. I'm not bragging, but I can ride my bike. From the far southern tip in Pine Crest where I live to the northernmost point in Long Branch in fifteen minutes. So why do so many of our patrol officers need to spend so much of their time cruising around and burning gasoline? We need to determine the minimum number of officers on duty who need to be in a car for a rapid response to a crisis. Then ask the question of all the police cars we have, many of them SUVs, how many do we really need? If most of our policing can happen on foot, that's not only greener, it's friendlier. Healthy relationships also rely on establishing healthy boundaries. It's hard to be clear on the scope of our police services mandate. And my impression is that it quite often involves our officers taking the lead with assisting people who have mental health or social services needs. If this is the case, we should be turning to the county of which we are apart. And working to get those services more directly accessible for we county residents who happen to live in Tacoma Park. Another aspect of boundary setting is ensuring that police resident encounters are not unnecessarily intimidating. What is a reasonable police to resident ratio for a standard non-crisis encounter? Is it two to one? Is it no more than three to one?
Thank you, Mr. Schlegel. That was five minutes.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. The last comment tonight, public comment tonight is Ben Miller. There you are. Go ahead, Ben.
Hello, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
All right. My name is Ben Miller, Ward Three. I'm here to state my support for defunding the police. Before I do that, I want to also state my support for. The reinstatement of the racial equity statement and community control of the standards for that statement being derived. I also adamantly oppose the flyer ban ever being reinstated. The flyer ban to me is crazy and explicitly anti-democratic, but that's not what I want to use my time for. I want to hammer home in this pivotal moment that more training and de-escalation and even. A small slash in the budget will not stop the systemic racism inherent in police. Following a wave of, I mean, you can look at the Minneapolis situation as an example. Following a wave of media tension about police killings of black people, Minneapolis went through a series of reforms. That proposed by, that were proposed by the Obama administration Justice Department. These included trainings on implicit bias, mindfulness, de-escalation. Crisis intervention, diversify the department's leadership. They created a tighter use of. Use of force standards, adopted body cameras, did a series of community dialogues. Then later they brought an expert from National Initiative for Building Community Trust and Justice, a three-year, four point seventy. Four point seven five million dollar project to use data collection. To try to strengthen the relationship between cops and the community. Did this prevent the murder of George Floyd and countless others? No. What will? Defunding the police, only defunding the police and replacing them with non-militarized emergency response teams will keep all of our residents safe. I don't have time to get into the plethora of well-thought-out alternatives, but I would love to go into more detail about those. With the council at some point, with other community members. I'm not saying it will be easy, but our small size allows us to implement these alternatives with greater ease than pretty much anywhere else. I also wanted to briefly talk about the city co-opting the revolutionary moment right now. The police department being involved in the printing of Black Lives Matter signs feels like co-opting to me. How can institutions support a movement? That is demanding that very institution's defunding dismantling. On that note, Mayor Stewart released a statement saying, "Today I call on residents to join me in an act of solidarity by putting signs up around. Town calling for justice, taking anti-racist actions to not only prevent police violence against people of color. But to dismantle the very structures of white supremacy wherever they exist." He said, "It is our job as leaders to change these laws and policies." The police, as well as the laws they enforce and the prisons that they send people to, are those exact. Structures of white supremacy that you speak of. So you use the word dismantle rather than simply seeking to reform those structures, so. I guess I would like to see that happen. Anyway. My message tonight is to abolish the Tacoma Police and to not let the MOCO cops take over our jurisdiction in doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Those are all the public comments. We have. This evening. So now we will move into our voting session. The first is a resolution regarding the mayor and council salaries. Do we have the city attorney with us at this time?
Hello, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening. I'm going to turn it over to you to explain the two resolutions we have before us.
Yes, ma'am. So by way of background. I was asked if there was a potential solution for the mayor and council to not. Accept their pay raises, which are scheduled under the city code to take effect on July first. The state constitution and the charter prohibit the mayor and council from amending the code during the course of their term. To adjust their salaries. There are a number of different reasons for that. We don't really need to get into that here. Generally speaking, if an elected official does not want to pay increase. The default method for addressing that is simply to have the elected official to donate the pay increase. Back to the local government. The city code contains language. That suspends pay increases for elected officials. In the event city staff's increases are suspended due to financial constraints. The city is currently going through labor negotiations and it's unknown what the status of any city staff. Pay increase will be, and that will not be known by July first. One reading of the code is that the mayor and council's pay raise takes place effective July first, no matter what. Another reading of the code indicates that it is. Tied in on a condition precedent basis to the staff increase or lack thereof. So the two resolutions that I have drafted, which are before you. The shorter one is the more direct path. And it is labeled in the top right-hand corner with a numeral one. And that directs the city manager to. Well, it indicates the mayor and council will donate. Their pay increase effective July first back to the city and directs the city manager to utilize best practices. And create the most effective method to ensure that takes place and accounts for the same in the city pay records. The second resolution is a bit more complicated because it attempts to account for. The possible ambiguity in the code. But it utilizes the same principle regarding donation in most respects. And it has before you, you have before you. An escrow-like concept in which. It assumes that the pay raise. that the pay raise may become effective on July first. That money is essentially placed in an escrow-like not really an account, but uh, line of accounting in the city's fund, and it it stays there depending on a number of different contingencies that may occur. For example, uh, option A, which is listed on the first page of the second resolution, indicates that the mayor and council will receive uh, any such pay increase on the same effective date um, as the the staff increase. And any money that was received and placed in the escrow-like account status will be donated back along with pay going forward. Option B would allow the escrow money to be donated back to the city, and then on the effective date of any pay increase for city staff, the mayor and council would be able to see, receive their pay increase at that same time going forward. The, and then a contingent option, uh, which is the very next paragraph below, option B, indicates that if the city staff's wage adjustment is suspended due to financial constraints, then the escrowed money would be donated back and the, any amount, and and the mayor and council would not receive any additional pay increase from the effective date going forward. It also provides a contingency in the event that no determination is made regarding city staff, in which case, uh, and, excuse me, no determination is made regarding city staff pay increases prior to the expiration of the mayor and council's terms, in which case the escrowed money would simply be donated back at the time the terms expire. Again, this uh, resolution would require the city manager to put in place, consistent with best practices, the necessary protocols for the purpose of ensuring uh, the resolution's intent. And that summarizes uh, the two different resolutions.
Great. Thank you so much. Um, I asked the city manager, I don't know if you had a chance, but uh, we don't, we don't make much in our salaries. Uh, the mayor makes around fourteen thousand, the city council, what, eleven, twelve, what he has up to. Um, so uh, the amount of money we're talking about here is about, you know?
You know, I'm not sure if, I think it's for the whole year, like twenty-three hundred bucks.
Right. Um, so I guess, and we're just talking about the, for us personally, because it would be through um, November.
Through November.
Right. Um, so given um, the amount of work that would need to go into place to create these different accounting systems and other things, I'm going to before to my colleagues that um, we do the resolution that donates our um, salary increases back to the city government um, at this time. I don't know if anyone has an objection to just talking about that resolution, if someone would like to talk about the other one, but just I think wanted to put in perspective the amount of money we're talking about and um, incurring additional work for our city staff, um, and maybe making this a little simpler.
And Mayor, just a clarification, that's just for this term?
Yeah.
So this does not apply to the next uh, the the next mayor and council uh, that would take office?
Correct, because we are not allowed to, yeah. Are you just checking, anyone have any objections to that, or, oh, I see hands, all right. Um, Councilman Kostick.
Thank you. Um, maybe you just answered this question, um, but my question was, what impact would whatever we do have on the overall um, accrual for future years? So I guess the, is the idea, if we do one of these things and our wage is lower because of donating back or um, or the the funds being in the escrow account, when the new council takes over in November, does that automatically jump back, jump up to the rate we would have been paid, and then from there on out, that continues to be the same amount? Okay. Okay.
So it's not, it makes no difference for the next council?
Okay. Uh, the other question I have, um, and I, I think I see some advantage to doing it potentially, but I'm, I'm curious in, in terms of um, the advantage of doing a donation, doing a resolution for us all to donate our budget wages back or make a decision on escrow versus individual decision-making processes for individual council members who may decide, based on their own needs, whether or not to donate back. Is, is there an advantage um, to doing it one way or the other?
It's not very much difference in work level uh, for either doing everybody or doing individual situations.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I, I mean, I, I personally plan to um, to donate the, the increase, and I'm supportive of that approach. Um, I mean, I, I also want to be cognizant of, of my colleagues and, and obviously not necessarily make a decision um, based on, on them and their needs, since I know we have been talking um, about uh, you know, the, the low, the salaries and the, the fact that the salaries and benefits, which I know we'll get into later today, are not particularly um, working in our advantage to achieve our goals of um, having a council that allows for a more representative sample of our community and is equitable in terms of allowing access to these positions. So those are just some of the things I'm thinking, I have been thinking of. Um, in general, I think I would be supportive of the um, the initial resolution. I, I mean, that's what I feel I should do with my amount of this, but I am curious to hear from my colleagues as well.
Councilmember Kovar?
I'm sorry, did you call on me, Mayor? I couldn't quite hear that.
Oh, yeah, sorry, Councilmember Kovar. Sorry.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Um, just a couple of questions. First of all, you know, I was one of the people who was talking about this when it first came up, so I do think at a time when the rest of the city staff has their pay, at least for now, at the same level that we shouldn't be getting an increase, so I think some, some action is appropriate. It's conceivable to me, and I, and maybe this feeds off of what uh, Councilmember Kostick was just talking about, and it might, we do uh, result in less uh, staff work. Should we just forget about passing something and those of us who want to donate, just donate it and then, you know, give us a number and we can figure that out and do it? So that's one option. So we don't have to pass something and you know, I suppose it would be the honor system where we could just send a letter saying that we had done it. So I put that out there as another option. And then the other thing, I, I wasn't a hundred percent clear on what the situation is with respect to what happens after November. So as a general matter, as I understand it, we can't approve an increase or a change in pay in the middle of a term that applies to us. Like if we've decided to raise, to double the pay for the city council, that can only go into effect after the next election at the earliest. And so in this case, if we did change it, not just have us each do it individually, um, why doesn't that continue to apply afterwards? If that question makes sense.
If I'm, if the question's directed to me, um, and I understand it correctly, my understanding of what was desired here was to have something for this council to address the situation through the end of their term. These resolutions are designed to um, are limited to that intent. Uh, in fact, they contain express language that it expires at the end of the council's current term. Additionally, the, the, anything addressing the um, future uh, councils would have to be run through part of the Compensation Review Committee process, which this is not part of.
So um, if, let's say, potentially the pandemic situation worsens or doesn't get resolved as quickly as we all want, and, and the the pay situation for staff is still not well-resolved even on into November, would there be anything that would prevent whoever the next council is and whoever's serving at that time from taking some similar step at that point if they decide to?
When you say similar step, I'm, I'm going to assume you mean uh, donating any potential pay increase? Yeah, no, there would be nothing that would prevent them from doing that.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you. I, I have a question for the city manager. After we heard from the Council Compensation Commission, I believe uh, that the median number of hours that council members were working uh, in this position was around twenty-five, thirty hours. Can you tell me how many city employees that worked that number of hours are paid at least eleven thousand dollars a year?
I can't say that. If we have an absolute floor for any permanent employee of at the full-time level of forty thousand a year, so if they're working twenty hours, it would be twenty thousand a year. We use the same rates. Those actually, those rates have been going up a little bit because of the minimum wage increases, and we try to kind of keep up with that. So somebody would have to make very few hour, work very few hours to make eleven thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you. You know, my concern with this is if we are invested in racial equity, if this even matters, why would we want to put in place resolutions that are going to set a precedent? It doesn't matter if it doesn't affect the next council, but we are making, you know, this decision now by a vote that a council can look back on and say, "Oh, well, they did it. Well, maybe somebody will propose it and we should consider it." I don't think if you individually want to do this, I think that's fine. I do not think that we should codify in any manner something like this. Thank you.
Okay, great. Um, oops, wait, I have two things going on. All right, does anyone want to move one of these resolutions this evening? Okay, then, nothing is moved. Um, thank you to the city attorney for um, your work on this and bringing this to us. I know we also had um, in front of you, and you're going to get back to us about the emergency ordinance, and did you want to speak to that briefly?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity to address that, because I know that was asked of me uh, in my last appearance uh, before the elected body. Um, and there, as, as all of you know, there are a number of legislative issues that are being dealt with right now within the city. But one of, one of the more important ones, of course, be the emergency ordinance. And um, I want to let you know, it's, it's a little bit more complicated than I think perhaps I initially thought to thread the needle of amending the emergency ordinance in such a way as to balance the competing requirements of the Open Meetings Act and um, also achieve the concept that is associated with the emergency ordinance. It is still very much a work in progress. And for example, as those of us who are working on the revisions to the tree ordinance know, if you pull a thread in one place, you have to address it in another place and, and, and then you find yourself going down a, a rabbit hole in different directions in which you may not have anticipated. Uh, but it is being worked on.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for that. Um, and I know you had something else to get to, so we'll we'll come back to that as well, and we'll see you um, next week.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much. All right, now we have our consent agenda. Would someone like to move the consent agenda?
Mayor Stewart, I'm sorry, could I ask that we pull the first, um, the engineering contracts? I just have a question I wanted to address on that.
We'll pull the engineering contracts out. This is a single reading ordinance awarding contract for engineering services. Um, and so, go ahead, Councilwoman Kostick.
Thank you. Um, I just had a question on this. I, I think it's a pretty straightforward item, um, but I just wanted to ask a question had come up about um, the, the way that the contracts. So we're approving this contract which sets us, which sets us up with an agreement with engineering firms. But this is not authorizing specific project dollars to be spent, correct?
That's correct.
Um, and then I, and I don't need an answer just right now, because I, I know this might require some additional digging, but I'm just trying to understand when and where we do end up voting on things like the sidewalk works. Because, for example, I don't think we actually ended up voting on the um, the Carroll Avenue sidewalk work that's happening now, and I'm not sure if that was wrapped up in one of the contracts or, or how that came out um, and was approved. And I know there, there is a plan to not move forward on the, the funds that are in the current budget due to um, those, those funds on sidewalk work being on hold. But I just would be interested in better understanding how that, um, the interplay there and, and how that works. But thank you very much.
Sure. So the, the, when you adopted the budget, each year you identify which um, ongoing sidewalk and road projects to be, are to be done. And so then we um, we continue to work on those um, through those standard processes, and they're not voted on again. What is the whole um, reason for the action on this is to ensure that we are making sure that we've advertised and followed correct purchasing um, requirements for getting firms, that we don't have something inappropriate about how we advertise and, and have an engineering contract, um, and that um, we have a standard rate that is approved by the council. And so it, we don't, we have never um, had situations where individual road or sidewalk work is approved by council unless it's a particular project or any project that identified a series of things together, or there may be something that might be required by state law on a that's, that is how the process has always been.
Thank you, and I apologize. I, I know there was a question on one of the listservs that I responded to, and I, I think I misspoke on that, so I do want to apologize to people. I was thinking about the um, the policy we have for voting on items where an expenditure is greater than ten thousand dollars. And so this seems to be in a slightly different category based on how we approve that.
That's right.
For that description.
Thank you. And, and as I had mentioned previously, our purchasing ordinance is something that should be addressed. Uh, it is not, um, it's inconsistent on the kinds of things that come to council and and how things are processed. Some things, I think, shouldn't have to come to council, and many things may should come to council. And those things, I think, um, in a future year should be addressed through the city attorney's agency. I think he's got a lot on his plate this year. But um, it, I do believe that the purchasing ordinance needs to be overhauled.
Any other questions about the um, ordinance awarding a contract for engineering services? All right, seeing none, would someone like to move that?
So Mayor Stewart?
Yes.
This is Jessie. Um, may I note, it's actually two separate ordinances, so since it was pulled from the consent agenda, could, could you take them separately?
Sure.
So the first one would be Rummel, Klepper, and Call?
Okay, I see it. I have it in front of me. Thank you. All right, so would someone please move the single reading ordinance awarding a contract for engineering services to Rummel, Klepper, and Call?
So moved.
Councilmember Siemens, do I have a second?
Okay.
Councilmember Smith, was that you as a second?
Yes.
Okay. Any other conversation or questions? All right, seeing none, since this is a single reading ordinance, will the clerk call the vote?
Yes, Councilmember Kovar.
Hi.
Councilmember Dibala.
Hi.
Councilmember Kostick. Councilmember Siemens.
Hi.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Circe.
Hi.
Mayor Stewart.
Yes. Next, we have a single reading ordinance awarding a contract for engineering services to Whitman, Rogard, and Associates. Would someone like to move that?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Circe, do I have a second?
Okay.
Councilwoman Kostick, second, any questions? Seeing none, will the clerk call the vote?
Councilmember Kovar.
Why?
Councilmember Dibala.
Hi.
Councilmember Kostick.
Hi.
Councilmember Siemens.
Hi.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Circe.
Hi.
Mayor Stewart.
Yes. Okay, then we'll go back to the consent agenda that now has just two items in it. Would someone like to move the consent agenda?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dibala, do I have a second?
Okay.
Councilwoman Kostick, will the clerk call the vote?
Councilmember Kovar.
Why?
Councilmember Dibala.
Yes.
Councilmember Kostick.
Hi.
Councilmember Siemens.
Hi.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Circe.
Hi.
Mayor Stewart.
Yes. Okay, that takes care of our voting session. Now we'll move on to council comments. Any council members have comments this evening? Nobody, Councilwoman Kostick.
Thank you. I seem to be having trouble getting to my buttons today. So I feel like I haven't been able to push the raise hand button in time. Thank you, everyone. I want to thank all the residents who spoke today. Really appreciate the feedback I've been getting from people regarding police and police reform. And I'm really looking forward to our discussion shortly this evening and into the future. The discussion last night, if you did not have a chance to listen to it with the District 20 representatives was fantastic, and we were very, very lucky to have them advocating for us. They have plans to make some really important changes at the state level, and we all can and will need to be involved in helping support them on that. I just had a couple of quick, brief updates. One is that the NLC, National League of Cities, summer meeting has been going on. I serve on the Human Development Federal Advocacy Committee, and we have been looking at revising and updating our, our policies and positions that NLC advocates for at the national level. And there are a number of items we are adding to that related to police reform as well as mental health and social services and childcare. We also had a really great discussion on immigration and workforce development at our meeting yesterday. I also wanted to just share a little news from the Transportation Planning Board meeting today. We heard from one of the TPB staff members who's been working hard to develop a mapping and prioritization of areas within the Metropolitan Washington region that are focus and priority areas for development of improved walksheds, improved walking areas around high-capacity transit centers. So that's metro rail, light rail of other sorts, BRT and major bus stations. And they started off identifying these different locations based on activity center locations, equity emphasis areas, use of these different bus and metro systems. And they had 200 and some locations, and they've narrowed it down to 49 specific locations that are identified as real opportunities as well as places that need additional work to improve the, what's called the walk shed, the area from about a half mile around that transit center. And one of them on the list is our own Langley Crossroads Center. So that's very good news for us in terms of the potential for priority funding and other access to things. It certainly doesn't guarantee any funding, but it does allow us to have some sort of priority status potentially. And we haven't formally adopted this list yet, but it looks like it will be coming to the Transportation Planning Board in the next month or two. And I think it's really good news that we're on this list of 49, and is very much needed. And I think it's a good opportunity for us to look into improvements that can be made there. Additionally, there is a BF Gilbert Neighborhood Association meeting tomorrow at 7:00 PM virtually. I will be there, I believe Mayor Stewart is also going to be there, and I'm looking forward to talking with neighbors and just chatting about updates and things that are happening in the city and the community. And then finally, I just wanted to raise this for my colleagues to get on people's radar. I've been hearing more frequently from a number of residents, and I'm happy to hear some interest in revisiting the discussion we had previously regarding the renaming of streets that are named for Confederate generals. I would be very supportive of change, making those changes. I think that's something we need to do. I do think there are probably more pressing issues in terms of priority, and I would much rather focus, if we have limited time and capacity, on immediate changes to, to make sure that our police department and our social services and workforce development, those sorts of things are in line. But I do encourage everyone to think about that and see if we can make some movement on that front as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Circe.
Good evening, everyone. Councilmember Kostick, I too have been struggling with pushing buttons this evening, so you're not alone. So I do want to thank all of the speakers tonight during the public comment period. I definitely appreciate all of your advocacy. I think, as Councilmember Kostick brought up, one thing that came to mind immediately during last night's town hall is the need for advocacy at so many different levels of government right now, federal, state, county. I think it's, and I'm looking forward to the conversation we're going to have with the police chief today, and it will be one of many. But I think that it's really important that when we're talking about policing, defunding the police, that we are equipped to make sure that we have the vehicles, the tools necessary to redirect those funds to a number of social service areas that have been grossly underfunded at federal, state, and county levels for a very long time, mental health, housing, all of those areas that are critically important. Delegate Wilkins brought up a point that I think was very salient and resonated with me is the fact that we are criminalizing poverty. And until we can figure out how to address poverty, we're going to keep finding ourselves in the cyclical merry-go-round of the poor finding themselves in prison for one reason or another. The people who are not insured to get the mental health services that they need find themselves in that situation. So definitely look forward to the conversations that we can have locally, but want to encourage folks to, the same way that you're a part of these Zoom meetings, let's make sure that we're on some of the county council meetings, making sure that we're advocating the governor as well as the federal level to make sure the funding is put in place for a number of the social services that are desperately needed in our country. So definitely, if you haven't had a chance to listen to the District 20 priorities in the town hall last night, want to encourage you all to do that. Councilmember Kostick, thank you so much for the Transportation Planning Board's possibility of including the, the crossroads area in its list of priority areas. I think that's going to be really, really, really important. So thank you so much for that. Tomorrow night, I, there is a community meeting. The New Hampshire Gardens Association is having a meeting, and I will be participating in that. Also, just want to thank Ian Chamberlain and Darryl Britheway. I know we've gotten a lot of questions, because we, you know, we've had a little bit of a, trying to capitalize on some contracting time, and there is lots of repaving that's happening along Glen Side. So definitely want to encourage residents in the New Hampshire Gardens area to call into the Zoom. The link has been sent out tomorrow at 7:00. And we'll be prepared to kind of talk about not just some of the paving questions and things, but any other questions that you all have for me. So definitely want to encourage folks to do that. And also, just as a reminder, again, the new, the Hillwood Manor Playground community meeting is scheduled for the 23rd. And all of the information to connect to that Microsoft Teams meeting as well as the call-in information is available online. So definitely want to encourage folks who are interested in participating to please call in and participate during the Hillwood Manor community meeting around the playground. So that's all I have. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, a few things. First, I will participate in an Essex House Tenant Association Zoom meeting with the property manager tomorrow. Grace Wiggins should be able to get on that Zoom with us. I would like to thank Jackie and Alex for their food distribution leadership at Essex House. They're doing it two times a month now. It's been excellent, tons of food is getting to residents. I want to give a special thanks to Silver Spring Cares, Yila, Megan, Heather, Michelle, Monica, Rebecca, who have given toys, food, baby food, and Pampers to a few residents in Essex House. They've gone above and beyond, and I appreciate their support. Like Councilmember Kostick, I participated in National League of Cities Transportation and Infrastructure Committee's meeting. It's good news that occurred during that meeting. The House Amendment 73 is going to be part of the Surface Transportation Block Grant funding, which will provide more money if it, the bill eventually passes to municipalities. That is excellent news. That House committee is chaired by Congressman DeFazio. So that was great news. I would also like to thank the residents that spoke this evening. It was, it was nice to hear what people were saying, not just about rethinking policing, but calling out what the issue really is. You know, we can talk about trainings, we can talk about, you know, different general orders, but if we don't deal with white supremacy, then none of these issues are going to do anything. There, nothing will change. It'll be a year from now, two years from now, maybe three months from now, a similar situation will happen in this country. So it was reassuring to hear residents call out what is the real issue here. We have to drill down and, and talk about the why, you know, the why these things are happening. One thing that, that also gives me hope is, you know, in grad school, part of this really small cohort, and we put together Black Lives Matter Working Group. And these are supposedly some of the smartest people in the country. And it's nice to see how these people really are trying to attack the main issues that are before us, our country, our nation. Poverty, why are black and brown people so poor? Why are black and brown people not before the same opportunities that the young people and some older people like myself that are given in these, in this elite institution? And that, you know, is what I think is, is something that needs to be discussed here in Tacoma Park, Montgomery County, District of Columbia. Why are so many black people homeless? Why are so many black people not in the ivory towers, whether it's the universities in this region or some of the NGOs that are working here? You know, if we can tackle those questions, then we can see true equity, not just talk about it, but actually see changes in our community. So thank you very much, and I look forward to the police discussion with the chief.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dibala.
Yes. Couple things. Thank you to the residents who spoke today, and also thank you to all the Ward Two folks who've come out and talked to me in various socially distant ways to, to talk about not just the issues of policing in Tacoma Park, but as others have said much more eloquently than me, the underlying issues, the advocacy that we need to do with other levels of government, and how we can reimagine what our police do and what is better done by, by others. So I just want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues, but on a more practical level, this is definitely National League of Cities week. So the Energy and Environment Committee met also, and I attended, and we talked, we also reviewed the resolutions and policies for the committee. And most of the discussion was about the intersection between equity and climate issues and how at the local level, we can bring that back to our communities and incorporate that. So I found that very, very useful, and we can park that for another night. And I also attended for the first time on the recommendation of the Chesapeake Bay, the regional cog, Chesapeake Bay Planning Group. I went to the Anacostia River Watershed Association meeting to hear what they are working on in terms of water quality and equity, and fascinating conversation, a project that they are working on in terms of cleaning up stretches of the Anacostia that are hotspots for PCBs, how they're going about it, what the issues are that they're thinking of, what the data suggests about the different impacts that we could assume. But they have now documented the different impacts to different types of people who live in, live up and down the Anacostia. So that was, that was really a great opportunity. And I would last like to put a plug in for the youth council. The applications are due this month. If you are interested, be sure to reach out to one of the current youth council members and, and see, see whether this is for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Siemens, excuse me.
Thank you. I was stunned to think that I might be able to get on the youth council. Yeah, I just wanted to say that I am just terribly excited that the position that we're in right now, it's some ugly business we have to talk about, but, you know, this ugliness has been around for years, and I'm excited that we are now actually talking about it, that the community is involved and concerned about it, as rightly they should be and should have been for the past years. And I'm certainly not pointing blame at anybody, because I've been on the council for a long time, and this is still going on. You know, it's, it's a complex issue, and I hope people have had a chance to listen to some of the things that we've talked about already just last night and again today, that this isn't something that's going to get fixed overnight. And it's, and of course, as Councilmember Smith said, it goes well beyond just fixing the police department. It's, you know, it's a societal issue that has, has been a plague in this country since its formation. And it's, is healthy for us to be talking about it, thinking about it, and trying to take steps to move us in the right direction. As far as the police department. As far as the, uh, police department goes, and, and some of the discussions that go, have gone on just here tonight in the public comments, and I, and I thank everyone for, for coming here and talking. Um, it, you know, some of the suggestions that we heard tonight, I know that, uh, that some people are gonna say, well, there goes those leftists again. They want to, you know, defund the police department. Uh, you know, how crazy is that? Uh, I would encourage everyone to listen to these suggestions and, and look beyond the, um, the terms, you know, whether it's defund the police or, or whatever, and think about what's being said and, uh, and how we can, um, take suggestions and see what really does fit and how it works together. I look forward to the council, uh, putting together some type of a group to, uh, help us to address this issue. But I also want to, uh, to caution everyone that, um, you know, a lot of us have been upset in the past, and, uh, that lasts for a while, and then it goes away. And, uh, maybe a couple little things get done, but, uh, more likely, a lot of things don't get done. And, uh, the, the attention that it gets when it's in the news is far greater than, uh, than it is when the actual work gets started and you have to start making some tough decisions and, and moving the ball forward. Um, it takes, uh, a commitment to, uh, getting the task resolved and also a, uh, an understanding that there is no final solution. It is, uh, it's something we have to continue to work on, on into the future. So we may come up with some, some initial, uh, things that everybody's gonna say, oh, that's wonderful, you know, that'll make our police department or our community, uh, safer. Um, but, uh, then we have to keep going. And, and I especially want to focus this point on the council, that, um, it's nice to look for some quick fixes, and maybe we can do that. But let's also think about the fact that this has to be one of our top priorities, uh, going forward. And for those of us who might end up on the council, uh, on the next term, uh, and we start talking about priorities, I think it's important for us to put this at the top of the list so that we put the proper resources, not just for the council, but for city staff and for the community to, uh, pushing this ball on further down the field. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kovar.
Yes, thank you. I, I appreciate it. And I was, uh, I'm also very appreciative to have heard from so many residents this evening. And of course, a lot of people from, um, Ward One and elsewhere have, have been in touch with me and about this question of reimagining public safety and, and police in, in our era and what we can do to shift funds into social and community services, uh, above, across a wide range of kinds of services. And I think that's something that we really do, as, uh, Councilmember Seaman just said, make one of our top priorities going forward. And I think this evening will be an excellent opportunity to hear from the chief about changes we can make both within the department in the short term, but also, um, to hear from him about whether there's other kinds of responses and ways of responding to, uh, nonviolent kinds of incidents that maybe, uh, implicate more mental health or, or other kinds of community concerns as, as opposed to, uh, criminal or, or law enforcement. So I think that'll be a, an important, um, conversation. As, uh, Councilmember, uh, seriously said, it's one that we have to approach at multiple levels. So we certainly need to do, uh, ta- take some steps here to do what we can at our local level. But as we heard last night from, um, our state elected officials, there's a lot of work there, and of course, at, at the federal level as well. And of course, it's true, there are personal and societal elements to this, but at the governmental level, much of what has occurred over the years and years is a result, the, the systemic racism that exists is a result of specific actions that governments took. It didn't just happen by accident, it happened because of racism, but there was explicit, specific actions that government took. And so it's going to require an hour apart, if we're going to make changes, to take specific actions. We can't just talk about the need to do, to, to, to take action, we have to do things. And, um, I'm looking forward to really listening to the community about what steps might make sense. I was struck tonight by the three proclamations that the mayor read off, one on Juneteenth, and of course, we had that really powerful statement about that by, uh, Gail Fisher Stewart. And then it was Pride Month and also, um, uh, Refugee Day. And all three of those communities have experienced various kinds of, uh, discrimination. And just as a side note, when I was working for, uh, Congressman Frank, and people used to say, there's this radical gay agenda. And he said, well, the agenda is to be able to marry who you want, enlist in the military and have a job. And the recent Supreme Court case, uh, ruling, of course, helped address one of those. When you think about Black Lives Matter, it's not even as un-radical as that. It's just about being able to, to live and, and not be killed, uh, and in other ways harassed by people who are supposedly there for our protection. So it's a basic elemental level of, um, nothing radical at all, something that should form the basis for any civilized society, what, what people are asking for. And I think, uh, in terms of the refugee component, of, of course, many of those, uh, refugees in our society, we're talking about people, people calling, there's an added language barrier. And so even talking about this, I'm conscious of the reality that a lot of the people that we've heard from, and a lot of the people that I hear from in Ward One aren't the people who are affected by it, as others may be. And there may be both language and other barriers that make that challenging for them. So I agree also with what Councilmember Seaman said. I mentioned this in my blog. I'd like to see us, uh, consider putting together some sort of, uh, community group composed of residents and others who could advise us and, uh, provide recommendations on how to proceed, because I think this is also bigger in some ways than just those of us who are on the council can reckon with. So thank you for, um, the, the chance to speak about this. Now, I'm sorry if I went on it somewhat at length, but I, I just wanted to mention those points and look forward to hearing more about it tonight and beyond. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Kovar. Um, I think that was all of our council members. I'll do, um, say a few comments, um, myself, and then I have some, some announcements. I do want to thank all the residents who, um, spoke this evening, um, especially those for whom this was their first time speaking at a council meeting. Um, I've heard from, um, a number of people regarding the issues on, um, the, either defunding the police department, reimagining, um, public safety. And like many of my colleagues, I've been virtually attending, uh, the National League of Cities Conference the last couple of days. I co-chair the Racial Equity and Leadership Council, um, with, uh, Mayor Warren, who is the mayor of Rochester, New York. And being able to spend time over, um, these last few weeks with, um, elected officials, um, around the country in other cities, and talking to them about the things that they're putting into place, um, looking at, um, has really helped, um, think about what we can do here, um, in Tacoma Park, um, in terms of, now, again, as we've all spoken about, that this isn't, um, isn't just about policing, that this is about systemic racism that permeates, um, all of our systems. And we really need to be thinking about, um, how we're addressing, um, all of those things. Um, I do want to say that I also, um, want to take time out and really, um, commend our city staff at the moment. Um, I know a number of them, um, including, um, Samira Cook Gaines, who is our, um, Economic Development Manager, um, and Roz Grinsby and a number of others are going through the Government Alliance for Racial Equity, um, Training, um, that's being offered through, um, the Council of Governments, um, in this area. And I know, uh, Ms. Cook Gaines actually sent us all, um, one of the training sessions, um, they had to do virtually, um, the last couple of weeks, and I was able to watch it over the weekend. And I know this program, um, is a great deal of work, um, for the staff, the hours that they're putting in on top of, um, particularly for, um, Ms. Cook Gaines, the hours that she's putting in right now, um, helping our small businesses. Um, but I just want to say thank you to the staff for really moving forward with the, um, racial equity work that is needed, um, in our city and thinking about how we can take, um, the, the racial equity framework and really operationalize it in our policies, decisions, in our budget decisions across our city government. Um, and, um, and I look forward to the conversations that we will have this evening with our chief, um, and build on the conversation we had last night with our D twenty delegation. Um, there's a great deal of work to be doing here in the city, um, and to look at what's happening, uh, at the county level and at the state level. Um, and, um, and I know that the, this is work that we're all committed to, um, here in the city. And I just want to echo my colleagues, um, who said that, um, I'm looking forward to also thinking about how we pull together, um, possibly, whether we call it a task force or a committee of, um, residents to really, um, do a deeper dive on many of the issues that we'll just start to talk about this evening. In addition, um, I want to let folks know a couple of other things that, um, coming up this week. I want to thank the city staff, um, for pulling together, um, information about the, uh, work and the impact of COVID nineteen, um, in our city. Um, yesterday, the, um, County Council, um, had a public hearing and voted on a resolution regarding the appropriation of CARES funding. Unfortunately, um, when the, uh, this was brought to the County Council from the County Exec's Office, it did not contain reference to municipalities. We continue to wait to hear from the County Executive's Office, um, how much, um, municipalities will be reimbursed and what the specific categories are for that. I want to especially thank our County Councilmember Tom Hucker, Andrew Friesen, um, and, uh, County Councilmember Gabe Alvinaz for, um, specifically calling out the need for municipalities to receive, um, CARES funding and amending that resolution. Um, otherwise, um, the, when I watched the, um, meeting last night, yeah, or get from yesterday afternoon, um, if we were going to be reimbursed municipalities, it would have had to take probably another act by the County Council. Um, and so this is an important step. We still need to work with the county government to ensure we receive those CARES dollars. Um, in addition, um, I heard from the county, um, that hopefully we will be getting a, um, uh, testing site soon in, um, Tacoma Park. And so we will continue to be working, um, with the County Health Department on that. Um, they are really looking at different sites in our city, um, for that. Um, I want to thank the, um, the city, uh, staff also, um, particularly in our rec department, for a wonderful congratulatory drive through the city for the seniors. Um, I was, um, lucky, uh, to have Principal Johnson from Blair High School, um, join me and my family to, uh, cheer on, uh, the graduates as they drove through the city. And so it was, um, a great way to celebrate, uh, the high school students who are graduating, um, not just from Blair, but all around, schools all around. Uh, people participated. It was, um, a wonderful afternoon. And I want to, uh, thank everyone. I know that was, um, a lot of work to pull together, uh, and it was, um, a great afternoon. Um, and I'm sure there's many other things that we can talk about, um, but I will end it there and turn it over to the, um, city manager.
Thank you very much. Yeah, it was fun, uh, to see the graduation, and I was out on, uh, New Hampshire Avenue. And it was, it, the people looked so happy in their cars, and it was, it was delightful. I want to, um, talk for a little bit about, um, kind of where we are in terms of, um, pandemic reopening. Montgomery County's Phase Two reopening is to begin on Friday at five P M. And, um, even when you look on the Montgomery County website, you will, you can identify what kind of, what changes occur between Phase One and Phase Two. Phase Two will allow some indoor seating in restaurants, some indoor service in retail stores, some indoor and outdoor services at houses of worship, um, some increased availability of childcare programs. In all of the cases, social distance, social distancing and maximum occupancy or size of gathering rules apply. I, I, I feel like a nag about this. If you are near other people and you can do this, please wear a mask. Uh, we need to reduce virus spread, we need to keep this number down. Um, in particular, when we're looking at our economic development support, virus spread inside of a local business will have severe economic repercussions to that business. The, the costs of additional business closures, cleanings, and employee testing are higher, are high. So shop local, wearing a mask, and I want both of those things. I want to note that the City of Tacoma Park governmental facilities will remain closed to the public, and most work will continue to be remotely, except for Public Works and Police Services. Main areas of the community center will remain closed for some time. City Council and committee meetings will continue to be held virtually. The police department is open for emergency services and can be accessed through the police lobby on the lower level of Maple Avenue. Please wear a mask when entering the building and follow the traffic, traffic flow path that's been laid out to help maintain social distancing. The Montgomery County Health Department has not yet approved the proposed Books to Go program being planned by the Tacoma Park Library for our contactless book, um, distribution. Montgomery County libraries are not allowed to open in Phase Two, and contactless book distribution is not permitted. We've been told we may be allowed to have a health department exception so that our program may begin. And materials that are touched will be quarantined for four days, and we'll have a process to protect both users and staff, uh, when picking up contact, when picking up library books. So keep post, we're, keep your eyes on it. As soon as we know, we have a go-ahead, we will let you know. As courts begin to reopen through July, you know, will be greater need for public, um, access to our buildings for police reports or some communications, um, related to code and parking enforcement. For that reason, we, we will begin to be, have a few more staff members in our city facilities. In-person service to the public will be via the police lobby only for the time being, but we will continue to communicate by phone or email to the greatest extent possible. We will be staggering workdays for some divisions, particularly when workspace areas are confined, but actual presence by some staff on-site is required. Staff that are working remotely effectively will continue to do so for the foreseeable future. And that's consistent with, uh, other municipalities and jurisdictions in the area.
Ms. Flado, could I ask a question about that?
Please.
Um, so I understand that this is a relatively small point compared to some other things we're working on, but I, I have gotten questions about it. I understand that the parking permit, uh, deadline has been extended by a couple of months, so it, it's August thirty-first. The question that's arisen is that people who were away for a while have come back to the area and so don't have, been a old expired sticker. And I was more or less told by staff that they didn't have to worry about and that they should just apply and they could get a new sticker. But I just want to make sure that that's sort of a safe call for people in that situation.
Sure. I mean, it's, we are responding to phone calls and emails. So if somebody has a question, please contact us, and we'll try to get some more information out to people so that they understand kind of what they can do with the parking stickers.
But right now, enforcement's not really taking place, or?
It is not, but I will say that there was real concern around Laurel Avenue closing and some other places that as these various activities begin to take place, that people may start to see parking, uh, in their streets that, um, start to be annoying, and they say, call for assistance. And at some point, and I think it's not too far off, we will start parking enforcement. So, um, it's, it's better to get your permits. And if there's some question, uh, please give us a call. So I wanted to let folks know that some city services have been reduced for either health, safety, or budgetary reasons. For example, we've suspended hiring temporary staff for garden maintenance. And as of June thirty, we've significantly reduced our part-time staff for city TV and recreation. We will be encouraging some volunteer help with our garden maintenance, such as an adopt the garden program. If you're interested in participating in or organizing such an effort, please email Ms. Darrell Braithwaite, um, in our Public Works Department. The most important unknown regarding city services is what might be needed for childcare. The city has traditionally provided before and after care, summer camps and special programs on days when school is not in session. We are waiting to learn how the Montgomery County Public Schools will hold classes in the fall so that we can see how we need to be supportive. And we may learn even this week some information about that. We are aware that lack of childcare is a significant hardship for families most affected by the pandemic. And we've been talking about the race equity issue related to that. In order to allow adults to return to work, childcare needs to be available. And we know that at least two private childcare facilities in Tacoma Park have closed permanently. So we have, we're looking at what to do. The standards for childcare during the pandemic are very high. It requires greater staff training and skill, greater physical space for small groups of children. And more frequent facility cleaning. We're studying best practices and considering options for various models as we see what M C P S proposes. Wanted to note that city playgrounds remain closed. I do know some people are climbing over fences on some of the park and planning playgrounds and. So there's, I think, a demand for playground opening. While we're working on, we are working on new signage for the playgrounds and we also are looking at how the processes will work. To take fencing down and put it back up if we need to do that based on how the virus is proceeding. Tacoma Park has a substantially higher rate of covid nineteen cases than Montgomery County does in general. So we may choose to keep our playgrounds closed for a longer period of time than the county does. Even if playgrounds are open, children and adults should wear masks and keep social distances. And children under two do not are not to wear masks. We've received inquiries from several people wishing to hold gatherings on closed city streets. I think I've gotten five or six in the last week. The county's phase two standard beginning this Friday. Friday evening is that indoor or outdoor gatherings must be limited to a maximum of fifty people. Or one person or family unit per two hundred square feet, whichever is lower. So starting Monday, if public space is requested to be used in Tacoma Park or a gathering. A plan to show how the space will be set up to maintain these standards. Be submitted for review and approved by me at least seven days in advance. We are working on is to get the required neighbor sign off on street closing requests that may be safer than going door to door. So still working on on how to do that. But for the event itself, there should be social distancing and class cloth masks between different families. And we recommend no shared food or open drinks. And depending on the event, we may have special requirements. So we're. At least temporarily, we're going to be trying to really look at the how things are laid out when people are asking for a block party or street closure event. Most of Montgomery County's phase two reopening applies to private business, to the private sector. And we're working with our small businesses to help them take advantage of the increased opportunities while also protecting public health. And so please patronize our our small businesses. They really need our money and our support. One of the things that we did and some of this was mentioned this evening was. The changes to Laurel Avenue. The creation of the Tacoma Streetery. To by closing one, the northbound side of Laurel Avenue. Allowing expansion for the restaurants and allowing public seating in the area. There was. There have been questions about why aren't there extra tables out for the general public? And why aren't there extra chairs? There are benches out. There is no one really assigned to clean tables and manage the tables, so that's something that we're looking at, but there is a there are some health issues related to the table. Request. We do have some additional chairs on backorder that we will hopefully be able to put out soon. We do have a survey on site on on our website and we'd love to hear people's comments about how to. What they like, what they don't like, recommendations to move forward. We're also encouraging and working with businesses and areas around the city. To ensure that we have public spaces for gathering and public support of businesses citywide.
And can I ask a quick question regarding public spaces, specifically Laurel Avenue? Are we going to? Allow residents to put up their own tables to encourage people to. To eat, you know, maybe they bring their own lunch. But they have to, you know, make sure that they do the social distancing, just like if you went to one of the private businesses, but. Something that does not require people to buy food from the local restaurants. Is that something that's being contemplated?
Well, we're certainly looking at it. The question is is the cleanliness. The so that's the issue about if if somebody would bring a table and set it up and then take it out. That's one thing. The but somebody to clean it right now, the the other tables are specifically being cleaned by the various businesses. So.
On there also. I didn't mean to interrupt. You or Councilmember Smith, but I. I think the concept of there being some public. Space. There and it's not just Laurel Avenue. Of course, there are other areas in the city where it could apply, but. That notion of there being some public space that people could use, even if they weren't patronizing one of the specific. Businesses was, I I thought. One of the key components of the resolution that we had passed and so. I don't know if there's a specific. Answer that I would say in terms of the clean, the restaurants that are there are being helped. Maybe they could do it. I understand we're short on staff, but I would lean toward making putting some tables there and assessing the situation as opposed to. Not doing it and and just not having it if cleanliness is an issue. We have adopt the garden, it sounds like. Maybe we could have adopted table too. I just really.
That may very well be, and we are trying to, you know, also have these spaces on Holden Lane and Anne Street and varieties of other places around the city. And so there may be a system that we can work out on that, but but it certainly it is an issue of. Making sure that we have something that doesn't blow away, making sure that we have something that can be kept sanitary. Especially in a health pandemic, and so we're looking at those.
But I think this is a central component of what we've done, so we need to.
I understand. I understand. Lots of discussion about it, trying to trying to accomplish that.
And I just want to add real quick that I appreciate your approach to. Being conservative in opening. If you look at what is happening out west, you know, there are cases that are just, you know, going through the roof. So I I don't want you to think that, you know. I think that things aren't going right. I do appreciate what you're doing. Because the pandemic is not gone.
Right.
Not over. Until we can get a vaccine or some type of actual proven treatment. That if someone gets it, then we know they're going to recover. That this is still a major health emergency. Thank you for what you've done. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And if I could just briefly chime in here, I agree a hundred percent because members with on on the the careful reopening and. As well with the importance of the public space on Laurel Avenue and Holton Avenue and Anne Street and the other locations where we're looking at. One of the things I think might be an option is simply to maybe have seating without tables since it sort of eliminates the the need to be sanitizing. An eating space where you're likely to get germs more than than a sitting space. And I I know we. Miss Love though brainstormed a little bit about other things that might just make the space more inviting in general, even if it's not seating, but some type of. Sort of decorations or something that invites people there and makes it a space where people want to be and enjoy being. So I I appreciate that you're looking into that and look forward to what will come of that. I also just want to flag, I I think I've heard some concern from people about. The handicap accessibility and the accessibility to the post office, so I would appreciate if you could look into that and make sure those are things that are accessible. And it was my understanding that there was going to be some parking enforcement, even if it was just. Warnings to people during this time in terms of letting people know that they need to not park in in places they're not allowed to park due to safety issues or neighborhood restrictions.
Yes, the police department is is keeping an eye, is monitoring how the parking is going. So I just to to close that part out, we're monitoring this very carefully. We're trying to make adjustments. I do know that some seating is on order, but is backordered, so we're trying some other options for a variety of ways to. To enliven and the space, but we also really want people to put their ideas on the survey. So that, you know, because this is its community space and I would like it to fill in the community. A number of people have mentioned last night's virtual town hall discussion on policing with the district twenty delegation. That the presentations online. It really was good. So if you missed it, it's worth watching. I thought it was very informative and it also showed. A lot of the major issues that affect Tacoma Park that are at the state level. And so as people listen to this discussion later this evening. Recognizing how how we have to fit in within certain state rules or procedures is is important and. And the areas where with those things can be adjusted so that they. Help meet our goals is important. And just a final note. While the just before the congratulatory senior drive through the city was the household hazardous waste drop off at Public Works Facility. They had their biggest turnout ever of a hundred and fifty one vehicles coming through in a safe way to dispose of household hazardous waste. I know people are cleaning up by being at while they're in home a little bit more than they maybe wish to be. And we appreciate that they safely disposed of them in the household hazardous waste day. I also want to make one mention related to the renaming of those streets. The, you know, one of the issues has been that we're not the ones that can name the streets. It's a county action. And since the actions are being looked at at the county level, we may have an opportunity. To not take the hard work on ourselves necessarily, but to work through the county process. Think that's all for me.
I have a quick question. You, your staff gave out a list of. The landlords and the property managers of the multifamily buildings in the city a while back. Is it possible that you could resend that to us? Thank you.
And just one quick comment. Could you please say again? What is the the new development at the county level on street renaming?
So my understanding is that at least the county council has requested a process to. Begin going through and renaming streets that were named after members of the Confederate Confederacy or otherwise have. I think racist ties or other. Ties that. Don't wish to have streets named after. And so they're undertaking a process. I don't know the final status of it, but it certainly is a push. And and it would be something that's county wide and we're affected by those the county street naming. Program.
I can circulate. I believe it was a letter to the county executive and to Casey Anderson. The planning board director to look into. The streets and monuments and schools. It builds on, I think there was already in place a process to re. Look at the names of schools, particularly in the county after they had changed the name of a local school to Bernard Russet. And so I think it's it's expanding that, but it was a letter to the county executive and to Mr. Anderson. Look at that, but I can forward the the statement that went out this afternoon from the county council.
Thank you.
Anything else from the city manager?
No, that's all.
Okay. Not seeing any other hands. We'll move on to our work sessions. Our first. Is a discussion of options for fringe benefits for future councils. And that we have our city's human resource director with us as folks remember. Before covid, we were talking a lot with our. Compensation council compensation task force. Looking at how future councils, again, this wouldn't be for us, but would be for future councils. May be compensated and one of the things they wanted to look at in depth is looking at fringe benefits and so. We wanted to have our human resource director provide some feedback on what. Might be possible to explore in the future. I will say we also wanted to look at at a later date, the. Updated principles that the compensation commission put before us and. What's what's the phrase? You you're voluntold or volunteer. Councilwoman Tabala has taken it upon herself to. Help us move that along and I'll look at that and come back to us with a resolution. So I thank Councilwoman Tabala for taking on that task. Over the next few weeks, so I'm gonna turn it over to our human resource director, I think now.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for allowing me to join you tonight and I want to thank the committee for all of their work. My understanding is they went through quite an extensive process. To get the recommendations to you. I've reviewed them and and touched base with some. Fellow H R representatives to go over the recommendations and I I want to mention first. Several of the public comments touched on. Consideration of the race equity piece of all of this. And as Mayor Stewart mentioned, I'm one of the representatives for Tacoma Park on the government allowance. Alliance, sorry, for race equity with the cog cohort. I think one of the major pieces that's missing in these recommendations is the race equity piece. I think. One of the main focuses that we're learning at the race equity cohort is the use of a race equity toolkit. And one of the major pieces of that is data collection and data analysis to really be able to do a deep dive of why there are issues and. What those issues are and what. The right steps are in order to be able to. Get to those issues, and I think that's the piece that we're missing here. I think. The goal or the main goal should be to have and not just on council, but in the voices that we hear. On committees and also the people that come to council meetings, I think we definitely need to hear from the. People that we don't hear from a lot. We want to have a more representative, you know. Piece of the population that we serve. And in order to do that, I think we need to hear from them on why we're currently not hearing from them. I think once we do, we once we get that information, we can definitely. Have more pointed benefits that will allow them. To come forward more to work with the city more to to expand their voices more. That being said, and that's not a fast process, that data collection analysis. I definitely think it needs done, needs done in the future, but with what we have and the recommendations that. The committee put forward, I think. There was a couple of focuses besides salary. One was health insurance and one was childcare. Health insurance, I think, is the easy one. Council has. Access and availability to take on the city's health insurance currently. The city has various levels that. Employees and council members pay for the premiums for health insurance. And generally, it's dependent on. How many hours are worked and whether it's permanent, how how permanent the hours are that a person works. So currently. Council pays. The same amount of premiums as a part time twenty hour a week worker. I think health insurance is, again, not knowing the actual data. I think health insurance is one of the key benefits. That could be really helpful. And a really great benefit that we could offer. And that is changing that premium amount that council members have to pay isn't is an easy fix, kind of. It's definitely. Budgetary. It's definitely a lot of money depending on what level we change it to, but that's the major consideration that we have to take into account. Right now, the or four, sorry, as of July first. The the employee amount only for health insurance is seven hundred and fifty dollars a month. Or nine thousand dollars a year. If you take a family, it's twenty six thousand dollars a year. So just looking at the different options of what council will have to pay. council will have to pay for premiums, there's, there's quite a lot of swing there that we can allow for benefits. And that's, again, the easy option for making a benefit change.
Great. Could you, could you stop right there for a second?
Yep, absolutely.
Yeah, say that again. That's the amount that the
That's the amount that that is charged by insurance. So there are various levels of what people pay the rec council and employees of that premium. So that's the premium that has to be paid between the person and the city. Currently, council pays 50% of that premium. So if it's, if you're, if the council member is just paying for themselves, they're paying half of the 750 a month or 323, 25, something like that. I'm not great enough. But if it's a family, they're paying half of 2,200 a month. So making a change to what their contribution is in that premium is would be a large benefit. And potentially allow people that are not running for council right now to possibly run for council, if that's something that will help them make that decision and allow them to do that. Other questions right now?
If I, if I can just interrupt it, just for the general population that may be watching, a a city employee that works full time and just is having insurance for themselves, they pay no out of pocket amount for health insurance. So we, it's only when you are part time or you are pay have dependents or a spouse that are included that that you pay extra. When it's halftime work, then there is a fee. And so kind of the graduated level of any of that is what she's speaking about and what the council could consider for future councils.
Thank you for that clarification. Any other questions on that? So the the second kind of main focus of the recommendations from the committee was childcare. I think I think it's generally that it's been in a lot of conversations that childcare is likely one of the, one of the roadblocks of people not coming to more council member or council meetings, not speaking up more, not being on committees. So we've had several discussions about what can be done in order to fix that. There is currently for city employees, they're, they have access to a flexible spending account. The way it works for permanent full time employees is a portion of their paycheck is put into a flexible spending account that they can then use. It's a tax free benefit that they can then use for childcare. It's a little tricky for council meetings. I I don't know that it would work for a few reasons. The the employer can put money towards a flex spending account. The maximum benefit federally allowed is $5,000. The trick is that it has to be used for a licensed daycare location. So it would have to be at a licensed daycare down the street, a kinder care, something like that. It can't be used for your 16 year old neighbor to come watch your kids while you go to the council member or while you go to the council meeting. So I don't know, I don't know that that would really fix the problem. And it's, we've talked in the past about potentially having, whether it's feasible to have child, develop a program to have childcare on site for the, anyone that comes to a council meeting to have childcare for their children while they're at the meeting. I don't know how feasible that is either. Especially as late as some of the councilman meetings have gone. I've only been to a couple and I I left early. I don't know how many citizens or council members would want to bring their kids to the city, the city offices that late at night, which is another reason I'm not sure that that idea would work. So we're still, we're still going through a lot of debate on what that can look like. I'm not sure, though, that using the flex spending account will work. Since my assumption is most people, and again, it's an assumption, as my assumption is, most people would not be using a license on daycare for in state evening meetings. Questions on that? So I think in general, the other premise that the recommendations put forward were that council members have access to any other benefit programs that are developed to the same level as full time employees. Certainly, there are other benefits that are, we have begun discussions about putting them in place. Nothing is set in stone yet. I'm certainly absolutely willing to have the consideration to have counseling availability to any of those programs as long as it's, you know, legal and feasible and and not have tax implications along with it that will cause problems for council members. So those were the the three main points that I wanted to kind of go over. If, do any of you have any other questions specifically?
Actually, also, Tracy, perhaps you could just mention the fact that, I mean, I I think reminding council that as you're doing these virtual meetings, we've been able to have a number of people speak at least to council with children that have never been able to come to council meetings, it seems. And so the more that there's some options for virtual meetings or other kind of distance participation, that may help address the childcare issue as opposed to having it as part of a benefit. Of course, there's also just paying for childcare. And so that's one of the other options for childcare.
And one of the other potential roadblocks is transportation to and from the council meetings. Again, if it's, if if it's a virtual meeting, that should be diminished at least. But that's another benefit that we could potentially look at in the future.
Great. Any council members have any clarifying questions? Councilmember Kovar?
Yes, thank you, Tracy. And I was wondering to to what extent in your experience or maybe what you know about the HR world, how much is pay actual salary as opposed to fringe benefits a determining factor in whether somebody is able to take a position or do a certain job? Is is there even a way to characterize that? Or is there such a wide range of differences that it would be hard to tell?
Yeah, I think I think there's, it's definitely, there's a wide range. I think there's somewhat individualized answers. I think it depends on what kind of position it is, what your location is, what other building blocks you have already in place. And all of those, all of those are somewhat personalized, which is part of why I think we really need, if we're looking to have an answer to why, how we can get underrepresented voices more active, I think we really need to ask the underrepresented voices what they need so that we can eliminate the roadblocks and do it successfully. Because I think, I mean, generally, yeah, it's, it's wage and it's health insurance is a huge piece of it. I think usually you can count on about 50% of a salary coming into fringe benefit for a full time person. I know our insurance is really extremely good. And I think it would be extremely beneficial to have have a lower premium available as much as possible. But there again, we're talking about the budgetary constraints to go along with that and what the availability is to do that.
Well, I would say in some respects, in terms of participation, not as a council member, but just as a resident participating in council meetings or council activities, but in particular, the formal meetings. My guess is, and my strong belief is that we should, if we move past the COVID pandemic to the point where we're able to meet again in person, so to speak, and in the council chambers, that we should continue to make Zoom or whatever technology we're talking about a permanent part of meetings so that people can participate more. But I think that's only a one component, because there are clearly wide swaths of the community who, for whatever reason, beyond that, and the language barrier, of course, maybe one, don't feel that they're welcome or don't or don't want to participate. And so I think hearing from them, maybe again, through the creation of a committee, as we, as we discussed earlier, to hear from people elsewhere in the city would be beneficial. I think in terms of council members themselves, it it really is beyond just the hey, it's crucial, but it's not just the participation in the council meetings themselves, because at least with those, you know when that's going to happen. And to the extent that childcare is an issue, you may be able to make arrangements for that. It's all the other kinds of meetings and things that happen where I think it really becomes more difficult, because those aren't scripted out or timed out or scheduled in a way that you can easily plan on them from from day to day. And I know that at least one of our colleagues who has to deal with young kids, that can be, that can be challenging just in terms of arranging a time to talk to us. So there really are these overlapping factors. And I think whatever we can do to somehow, I don't know if survey is the right word, but get feedback and input from people elsewhere in the community who haven't generally been participating as much as they could. Why that's true, that'd be very helpful.
Yeah, I think one of the other pieces that has been discussed is having a education component and piece to it as well. Not, and and hopefully that will encourage people to begin taking the steps to participate. But I I think until we get answers, and even even after we have answers, I think it's important to educate the community on why we need to hear from them, what it looks like, why, you know, what the steps are, what the process is, you know, it's, it can be scary for someone that doesn't know the system, doesn't know the people, isn't aware of government in general, except for maybe the bad pieces of it. I think the education piece of it is extremely important. And whether that gets them to run for council or not, at least I would hope that that would start giving them inroads to have some kind of more discussion, whether it's be reaching out to council members or joining committees or coming to council meetings in general or jumping on the Zoom call and making public comment or whatever it is. But I think that education piece has got to be another important piece of it in in conjunction with asking what is it that you need in order to participate? Because we need you to participate.
Thank you.
I had a question. Going through the the GARE training and looking at all that, I know, you know, there's been lots of studies done on why people run for office, why they don't, or are some of the barriers. I don't think any that I've seen look specifically at these types of other benefits or salary. And I was just wondering if through the GARE work, if if they or any other organizations that works with GARE has looked at this issue?
Not to my knowledge specifically. I can tell you that the the cohort we're involved with is fairly extensive. And we have made a lot of networking contacts beyond what I think we already had. And a lot of the organizations are doing different projects and policy work. And it's, it's very possible that somebody else has started digging into this. So that's something that we can certainly reach out to the other organizations and municipalities to see if they've started getting answers on it or not.
Great, because I do think it's, that would be something, you know, I know in Tacoma Park, we have, there are some things that are very unique about us and but I think looking at what maybe other areas or suggesting this would be beneficial. I know over the last few years, we've done, we've, we've tried to, you know, move the city council meeting, have it at the New Hampshire Rec Center to make it somewhat easier for people to attend. You know, I had hoped we could have done more of those types of of meetings in different places. And unfortunately, we ran up against needing to make sure everything was ADA compliant and having those kind of access. But I think exploring more some of those things, you know, I think is really important. In particular, I know a number of us, Councilmen C R C and I, having done the lunches in the crossroads, particularly has been really beneficial in terms of connecting with people, with the local businesses there and making sure that they see their government. Because I think it's really important for us to go to people and at get outside our buildings. Unfortunately, that's a little difficult now. And under this, under COVID and social distancing, I think we're gonna have to find other ways of doing that. And so I, and again, I know our city staff is really thinking about those issues. But I I do think lots of times going, getting out of our building and going to people so that they see the face of the city government is really important.
Absolutely.
So see, sorry, Councilmember Smith.
Ms. Smith, thank you for your presentation. I would just want to say that I don't know if healthcare is the biggest reason why people may or may not run. I think it's, it's part of a number of issues that come up when you're thinking about this. I think the biggest thing is, since I'm part of that demographic, is there two parts to the position. There's one running for it. That's completely different from governing. And there isn't like a manual that comes with being an elected official, right? It's not like you can, like a job description that you put out all the time for positions that lists exactly what you're supposed to do. That's not what happens when you're an elected official, right? You're just supposed to represent people, whatever that means. So for a lot of people, they might understand some of the idea of running, but they don't think about or have not considered what's the next part of that. And I think we could help with trainings. We could help with bringing in NGOs to to let people understand that. But I think there is also the possibility of resistance in the community that more people will actually be elected that are from a different demographic. And that, I think, is is a real issue. You know, when I was first elected, I was only black guy in any of the municipalities in Montgomery County. It has changed, which I think is a good thing. But it is not easy for a person, black and brown, to be in this position. You don't have the same type of access that you might even, does it matter where you come from? If you're white in Montgomery County, just, it's just not there. Can you go through some of the other benefits that employees have that you're thinking about could be a possibility of extending to a future council?
So to my knowledge, the only, the only two things that the only two things that the council is not able to participate in that that employees currently do is a 457 plan, which is a future benefit plan, like similar to retirement. And then tuition reimbursement, I believe, are the only two things that council does not have access to that regular employees do. Again, there's other things that we're looking at, other benefits. Types that we're looking at like transportation reimbursement or something like that, that would absolutely, I don't see any reason why that wouldn't be available to council. Like I said, I don't beyond budgetary constraints and tax implications, I don't I don't have any hesitancy to to extend benefits to council when regular employees have them.
Thank you.
Councilman Searcy.
Thank you so much. This has been a really helpful presentation. I feel like we're addressing like three things at the same time. One is, you know, what's the right, I like to call it buffet of benefits to provide to the council, given the part-time nature of the position. It's not very set in terms of hours and what you do. And in many instances, unless you're talking about retirees, a number of council members have other jobs, right? And so one of the questions that I have is about, you know, that buffet of benefits. Like right now, it feels like there's this set set of things that you're offered as a council member. I can speak personally for me, I'm very fortunate. I have a day job that covers my my health insurance and other benefits. But if I had to deal with childcare, you know, my first question would be, well, why don't we have a dependent care FSA? You know, where it wouldn't be, you know, up to the city to provide childcare services, but it would be, you know, you would match a certain amount of pre-tax contribution that someone may want to make into a fund that they could then use for for childcare. And that's a benefit that would be pretty useful. And someone may decide, you know what, I would forego a medical FSA. And if you could redirect that match to a dependent care FSA. So is that something that is currently offered to employees? Is that something that you all have been discussing at all or?
Is is your question whether there's different options to choose from? So
Right. And whether or not have a dependent FSA.
So all employees, sorry, all permanent employees have the option of putting into both healthcare FSA and a childcare FSA. The city does not make any contributions to those. Those are only what they choose to take out of their paycheck to use for tax-free purposes to pay for health insurance and and childcare. So they have the option to do that. I think what the council compensation committee, and I'm not sure if that you were trying to go down this road or not, we don't have we don't have a system in place where they get to pick this or that or like A, B, or C, and they get one of those. They just have the options to to opt into them or not. And that the the childcare FSA and the healthcare FSA are both something that can be offered to council. The only thing that I think is not offered to council, again, that that employees have the option of is if you if a permanent employee waves health insurance, the city contributes the amount that the employee-only premium is, which was the whatever it was, $800 a month or whatever it is, into the 457 account. That's not offered to council. But that's not, again, for full-time employees, it's not, if you pick this, then you don't get something else. That's just given to to full-time permanent employees.
For full-time employees. Okay. Yeah, because that was, that's one of the things that I was trying to figure out, you know, how exactly could that work so that a council member could make specific decisions based on what it is that they actually need and not have to necessarily opt in? Because you're coming to the table in many cases with very different benefit needs, quite frankly. And so, you know, I think that enabling someone to kind of make those decisions and not necessarily have to opt into everything would be a good approach to at least providing future councils with more flexibility to kind of pick and choose what works best for them.
Councilmembers, Searcy, I think one of the things that the that the compensation committee was really wrestling with with was how do you, if some council members choose this, how is it fair to the other council members? And they were trying to balance all those things out. And you can choose to decide that it doesn't matter or that it does matter that how that's fairly distributed. So that was part of, I think, what they were grappling with in the in the choice. There are some things that as as Ms. Smith mentioned, don't necessarily cost the city money that may be an offer that that may be useful to a person on council. The one reason that child that health insurance and perhaps childcare seemed like they may be useful for some folks are for those folks who cannot do a full-time job because of the council job. They may need health insurance, you know, so there's so so some of that could be, you know, the the very specific nature of not having the flexibility in the in a person's full-time job to be able to do council member work. So if they take a part-time position or they're working from home and have things moving around, they just don't have enough to have full time, to have full health benefits from other work. And so I think that was one of the reasons that it was considered perhaps an attractive offer. But going back to where Ms. Smith started this whole presentation, we didn't ask people. Yeah, I think that wasn't asked about what would you need? And that's that's the data that we do not have.
Yeah, I mean, one and that kind of goes to the second point of not just, you know, current and future council members, but, you know, what is needed to actually recruit people to this position, particularly, you know, people of color and folks who are not how do I, you know, and I'm not going to be PC, it's 10 o'clock. Poorer people who as Councilmember Smith, don't know anything about the process of running, let alone you get on council. And then on top of that, you're getting paid $11,000 a year. And how on earth can you manage a family in addition to any additional costs that you may incur as a result of having to go to all of these meetings? In addition to not having the the flexibility in terms of your income to go part-time and still survive? It's just not realistic. And so then, as a result, you end up with more people on council who have that income flexibility, either through a spouse or through, you know, their ability to just, you know, work a full-time job and not have a lot of sleep. It creates this this divide where it is a situation where you're more elite people either financially or such are able to run and those who perhaps could add such an in-depth understanding of what's needed in a number of communities that we are really struggling to reach couldn't drum up the money to buy the signs, let alone deal with the fact that they may lose a substantial amount of potential income as a result of serving on council. So I do think that, you know, there are other things that we need to start thinking about in terms of providing more opportunity for people to grow into leadership positions such as the council. I think it's important for us to try to establish, like I plan to donate my increase, my, you know, what we didn't vote on, but kind of did earlier today to the city, but I would prefer for my funds to go towards maybe a fund that could be established that people who want to run for city council, who don't have the money to buy signs or kind of get started up. They, there's money there for them to be able to do those types of things. Because I personally had no idea what I was doing and and quite frankly, came out of pocket for some of the initial mail, you know, materials that you need to give out and the like. So I think that those are some of the things that we want to consider when we're talking about trying to bring in more people of diverse backgrounds. In addition to the benefits package, which I think is really important. But if there are other ways in which we could tackle some of these known, you know, financial barriers that people may have either in running or and as serving on council, I think that's important for us to do as well. I also want to talk a little bit about participation. I know that, you know, we're talking a lot about trying to engage and get more people to participate in council meetings and committees. And I think one of the things that's been really, you know, great about the pandemic is the fact that folks are having to rely on technology in ways that they might have been hesitant to do in the past. But one of the things that's also come to light is the fact that we have a large number of our community who don't have access to the tech needs in order to engage like this. You need a level of internet access and computers, smartphone, those kinds of things in order to be on a Zoom call, right? So if what we want is for more diverse participation, then we may want to start thinking about programs designed, maybe in some of our multifamily buildings, designed to really try to make sure that there's internet access within those buildings that would better enable them to participate in something like this. You know, or even watch it later because it's long and these things go late. But, you know, just making sure that people have internet access and the tools that they need in order to engage. I think we often work under the assumption that it's very easy for people to do this. And what we're seeing through COVID is that it's it's not as easy as you might think for people to have the necessary internet access to do schoolwork or to engage in a council meeting like this enough to be able to to do it in a meaningful way. So that is something else that I do think we need to to think about when we're talking about ways to engage others in the community to participate in council meetings and committees and things like that. Making sure that there's access either through technology, but also when we're talking about transportation and those needs too. I think those are other things that is important for us to keep in mind as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Kostic, sorry.
Thank you. Yeah, I really appreciate the discussion we're having tonight. I think this is really, really important. Really, really appreciate the points that have been raised by Councilmember Searcy and Councilmember Smith. I I agree that I think just the structure of the of the positions and the matter of having to run for a position that you don't know, you know, starting out, you don't know if you're going to get it. And so having to potentially spend money out of pocket to get your campaign started, to run for a position that pays $11,000 a year for 20 to 35 hours of work per week is is not something that is going to come to mind to people immediately if they're looking to make ends meet and looking for a job focused on a need to pay their bills. So I think we need to really look at the structural components there. And I think that is one of the biggest challenges that we face in terms of making sure that these positions are equitable and are available to really a representative cross-section of our community. And I I think we're on the right track. We're looking at the the healthcare components, which seems to me to be a promising aspect of this to look into. Childcare, I can speak to personally. I think it may not be enough to move the needle alone on getting people to run for these positions that wouldn't otherwise do so. But I do think it might be a component of it. And I I think it's not just the time that we spend in these meetings. It is all of the other times that we work. And so it's answering emails or attending a council of governments meeting or attending a National League of Cities conference or having a community meeting. All of those times are times when you either need to bring your children with you or have someone to watch them. And it's, it can be really challenging. And I know many of you have met my children or played Play-Doh with my children or seen my children on Zoom meetings, because it just is challenging. And I think it just in terms of as Councilmember Searcy said, you know, you're having people who are working full-time jobs and then being on council and then having families and you are taking time away from your family as well. And I think these things need to just be a part of the equation when we're thinking about these positions and a part of also the expectations that we have for our elected officials and the value that we place on having having people with different life experiences in these roles as well. So I I would be interested in continuing to explore about the healthcare and the childcare options as ways to encourage and and grow opportunities for people to run for the positions. I I do really, really agree that we need to hear more from the community and hear more of what would be useful. So we're not kind of taking a stab in the dark. And as people who have have run and for these positions, obviously, we have a different perspective than people who have not. So I think it will be useful to continue to gather that information. I am curious to find out a little more about the option, I think you mentioned it briefly, Ms. Smith, about education and tuition reimbursement, if that is something that is offered currently to employees and if that's something that might be an option to open up to council members as well.
So currently, we do offer tuition reimbursement to full-time permanent employees or permanent employees, does have to be full-time. Up to two classes per semester per semester is what we currently will reimburse for. Generally, they sign up for courses and then after they pass, they submit grades. I think they have to be passing and they have to show proof of what either was charged or what has been paid. And then we reimburse for two classes per semester is what's currently offered. And that's one of, as I said, that's one of the other benefits that is I, to my understanding, is not offered to council right now.
Yeah, I would be interested in considering that as another another thing that we're looking into and and potentially offering to council members as well, either that or some version of that, I think, could be useful in attracting, again, people who are in different stages of their lives and doing different things in their lives as well. So thank you again. It really great discussion and looking forward to continuing to explore this. And I think as we've seen, it's also really wrapped up with the questions of engagement with the council as well as running for council. So our our committees and what that looks like, how we have council meetings and where we have council meetings. Another thing I think might be interesting to explore is having maybe some far more informal or shorter council meetings, actually just outdoors. And some of the research I've seen is that when people see people meeting or gathering outdoors, it can just encourage them to sort of wander by and and come up and see what's happening and maybe not. Maybe they wouldn't go to a meeting at the community center, but if they're wandering by and they see a meeting, they might stop and listen for a few minutes and get engaged. So those type of things, when we are able to meet in person, might be an option as well. And 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 then finally, I think, looking at our capacity to support people in running for office as Councilmember Smith raised, just the training and information and materials available to people is something we need to work on.
Great. It is getting late. I know residents really want to hear from the police chief. And so Councilwoman Dibala, do you want to?
I will be brief. I think, thank you.
I think, uh thank you, Tracy, for all of that. Um I think we should explore, we should do the easy stuff. As you said, some of this is pretty obvious. And um health benefits, I I also think that childcare, not necessarily at midnight, but during the day is an option if people choose it. I like the flexible system. Uh so I think I think that we that's that we should do. You brought up asking the questions, and we should do that, but I wouldn't want to wait till we are able to do that, to do at least some of this. It strikes me that the comments everybody else has made already about supporting folks in campaigning, supporting folks and knowing what that looks like and helping them maybe financially to do it makes a great deal of sense. And um and I think as as people have said, it it doubles back to civic engagement and making that possible for many different types of people from the beginning of contacting, knowing you have a council member, contacting your council member and on through the committees on up to running for council. We, as part of the committee, the the work group on committees, we've been looking at some of that. But again, I wouldn't want to wait on some of this till all of that wraps up. I feel an obligation to respond to some of the good suggestions that have been put out already. Thank you.
Great. Um so I'm hearing from a lot of council members that they want to explore this. I I do want to um go back to, as Tracy said, that um doing um these things have a budget implication. Um and so we would be um setting things up um for future councils since we can't change our own um compensation. Um and so in order to do that for a future council, um to be able to do this, we'd actually have a have to have a budget amendment um and take this money from either some other place or take it from what we put on hold. Um so um I just want to make sure people, everyone on council understands that as we say, oh yeah, let's do this. Let's explore this. Um as Ms. Smith said, that um this this does have, if we extended uh the or change the premiums on the healthcare or the things um for the future councils, does have a budget implication. And so um if council um would like this to come back to us um with some budget numbers, um we can ask Ms. Smith to um put together um something for us to consider um over the next few months. But I just, I want to make sure that's what I'm hearing from council before directing city staff to do additional work um on this. And so just to be clear that if we did continue exploring um changing the premiums for um health insurance or providing um, you know, uh savings accounts for healthcare or or childcare or doing some of the other things we talked about tonight, we do need to look at where that money would be coming from in the budget. Pass a budget amendment and then move forward. Um so that would just be our process. So um am I hearing that that is how we would like to? How about we just do a hand vote of um council members who would like to direct Ms. Smith to look into what the budget implications would be and bring back um some numbers, some specific numbers to us on what we talked about this evening, and we can see if that's something we want to um look at in a budget amendment moving forward. All those in favor, raise your hand. I like, all right, then I think then you guys are marching on, this is Tracy.
Very good. Thank you.
Great. All right. Thank you so much. Um and so now we will turn it over um to our police chief to to speak.
I thank you for the opportunity to address the council and the community regarding policing in Tacoma Park. Um I also appreciate um those of you staying so late. Um I'd open the window and do a few push-ups, so I appreciate you sticking with us. Um you should find on the screen an overview of the topics I plan on going over this evening. Um we are at a pivotal time in our country, not only in respect of public safety model, but also in addressing institutional racism across our country. Um I look forward to working with the community members, city council and our state delegation in reshaping the public safety model in Tacoma Park. Um I first wanted to address the murder of George Floyd and other African-American and Latino people at the hands of police. As all in our community, I'm deeply disturbed by the actions of Minneapolis police officers involved in the murder of George Floyd. The actions taken by the involved officers were incredibly disturbing and go against the basic law enforcement principle of preservation of life. The lack of compassion, abuse of power and excessive force does not just tarnish our profession, they tear about the very fabric of race relations in our country. Every human being must be treated with dignity and respect, and George Floyd was afforded neither. I'm glad to see all four officers involved in George Floyd's death criminally charged. I'm also glad to see the officers in Atlanta, both of them charged. Um it's time when we start holding our officers accountable for their actions. And I'm also glad to see the outrage from law enforcement leaders across the country. We can no longer sit back and allow these incidents to happen. Real change must happen, and the change starts with internally with for us with our hiring and training. We must hire people who want to be in law enforcement for the right reasons. Those who truly want to help people and understand the importance of developing trust and positive relationship with our community members. As I said before, it's not us against them, it's just us. I stress that all the time to my officers. We're part of the community, we're not, we're not warriors, we're guardians, we're part of the community. We also train our officers to de-escalate situations with dialogue, not force. And a vital key to developing trust and legitimacy within our community is removing problem officers from our ranks. It's my understanding the primary officer involved in the death of George Floyd had nearly twenty previous complaints lodged against him. While I do not know the individual facts of each complaint, the fact that the individual officer had nearly twenty complaints, two letters of reprimand filed against him in a twenty-two year is in and of itself alarming and should have warranted some intervention by a supervisor. The fact that three officers stood by and did not intervene to stop Mr. Floyd's death is extremely troubling. All the officers, all officers have a moral and ethical obligation to intervene when they see injustice occurring. All too often, we've seen officers stand by and not act when other officers abuse people of color. This must change, and all officers who do not act to intervene and stop incidents like Floyd incident must be held accountable. Every police officer and leader I know has condemned the actions of the involved officers in the Floyd case and in the Atlanta case. What is not being unilaterally addressed is the role race played in the incidents and the others across our country. It is clear there were moral and tactical shortcomings in the George Floyd incident and others. What is also clear is that all two officers, often these cases involve police victimizing unarmed persons of color. Et cetera. I'm not one to say it could never happen here in Tacoma Park. I will say this, we're doing everything we can to ensure something like the incident in Minneapolis, Atlanta and others across our country do not occur here in the city of Tacoma Park. This is important. As your police chief, I'm acknowledging the role race plays in our everyday life and how we police our community. I'm committed to hiring individuals that want to be police officers for the right reason, providing ongoing training to officers and holding officers accountable for their actions. I openly supported the Black Lives Matter movement, and it's when it was founded in July of thirteen in the aftermath of the murder of Trayvon Martin. I continue to support the cause. I was a minority of police officers and police chiefs that came out and supported the movement. I understood in its early infant stage and now how important it is for we as law enforcement executives and law enforcement officers to say, Black Lives Matter, and we support Black Lives Matter. That's extremely important. Uh I'm proud of the work we've done here in Tacoma Park to make positive connection with all of our stakeholders, especially those who hold the most mistrust of us, and that's our minority youth. That being said, we have a lot of work to do. We are a long way from solving this problem. Actually, the first step to fixing the problem is acknowledging there actually is a problem. As I stated before, I'm very pleased to see so many law enforcement leaders and most importantly, line officers come out and condemn these recent incidents. We as a community and a nation must come together to face the issues facing law enforcement, the law enforcement profession. I and all of the members of the Tacoma Park Police Department are committed to being part of the solution, not the problem. We are much stronger together. I understand why some are calling to the front of police. I do. I'm absolutely open to dialogue and to finding better ways to address the non-law enforcement calls for service. We as, we as police currently are taxed with handling, especially mental health calls. At first, as a person with members who suffer from mental health issues, this issue is near and dear to me and very important. It's not a day that goes by that a family member I have that I don't worry that he may have an interaction with the police that ends up in violence. Um I wanted to provide the community on some background on the services provided by the police department. It's really apparent over the last couple of weeks that some people do not realize what we do here in the city of Tacoma Park. We are a full-service police department. What that means is we handle all calls for service within the city from thefts to homicides. So we have forty-three sworn officers, that includes myself as the chief, that one deputy chief, two captains, three lieutenants, seven sergeants and twenty-nine officers. We have three divisions, and that's the Office of the Chief, the Operations Division and the Support Administrative Division. The Operations Division consists of patrol and community policing. This is the largest division with approximately twenty-nine staff members. Following under the Office of the Chief is, of course, May the Chief, the Deputy Chief, the Department P I O and Emergency Preparedness Manager, and we also have Research and Policy Development. Support Administration Division can consist of our Investigative Section, following under Investigation Section is our Criminal Investigation Section and our Special Assignment Plainclothes Team. Um also under Support Divisions is our Safe Speed Program, our Communication Section, our Property and Evidence Section, and our Neighborhood Services Section, our Parking Section and our Records Section. Um many people don't realize, but in addition to law enforcement's uh functions in the city, the police department also has, as I've mentioned before, Crossing Guard Section, Communication Section and the Neighborhood Services Section. Uh we also have our own victim witness coordinator as well as our own crime analyst. Our Crossing Guards assistance safe pass is for all of our children to get to and from school and have been an integral part of our community. One of our Crossing Guards, Ms. George Rogers, has been a crossing guard for almost fifty years. I remember as I grew up in the city and I have fond memories of her crossing me and my sister at the intersection of Philadelphia and Maplewood, she's still as opposed today. Um our Neighborhood Services was moved a few years back from the Housing Department to the Police Department. Neighborhood Service Division's primary mission is is to protect the health and well-being of Tacoma Park residents through the preservation of its residential and commercial infrastructure. Our responsibilities include community-wide enforcement, a properly managed maintenance code and other nuisance ordinances, investigation of nuisance complaints and referrals to appropriate county and state agencies in situations where local codes uh do not apply. We also have a victim witness coordinator, Ms. Claudia Tolson, who is an advocate for victims of crimes in Tacoma Park. Um she insists victims would follow up in cases. This is very important because a lot of our victims need follow-up and need assistance in follow-up on cases. And this can be assessed at the time and referrals are done for additional services such as counseling, medical care, support groups and compensation that can be given to victims after an accident. Uh we also have a communication section, which is staffed by seven dispatchers and one supervisor. They handle the receiving of calls for service from residents and dispatching officers to calls. Um aside from traditional policing here in Tacoma Park, we offer various uh programs to enhance personal safety and safeguard property through education and awareness. One of the most pivotal um and important uh programs we have is our Community Academy. This is an academy for people from throughout our community coming to learn what the police do. It everything from why do we do traffic stops to community policing to canine. Um community members are 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 able to understand what the police department um does day in and day out. Uh several of our council members have attended, attended. I encourage everyone in our community, if you want to know what we do, please come out and uh to our Community Academy. Uh for the sake of time, I won't go into some of our other programs, um but I do want to go into our budget, just so people understand a little bit about our budget. Uh the proposed budget for the City Police Department next fiscal year is approximately ten million dollars. And the funding sources for city budget comes from several different funding sources. The General Fund, which is approximately forty-four percent of the Police Department budget. We also have the Speed Camera Fund, which accounts for about eight percent of our budget and miscellaneous revenue, which is account, which accounts for about forty-eight percent of our budget. Um and the miscellaneous is the County Police Rebate um and other services and monies generated by the city for summonses, fines, parking enforcement and so on. Should be noted that about ninety percent of the Police Department budget goes to salaries and benefits. Uh during the Q and A session, I'd be more than happy to answer more in-depth questions about our budget. Um I was hired as police chief in January of two thousand eighteen. The selection of a police chief was a pivotal moment in the direction the city wanted to see their police force go in. City staff and council made sure the selection process and uh input from, there was selection process input from all residents. Uh efforts were made not only to have community forums to solicit input from residents, but also to meet with our youth of color to get their input on what they wanted in a new police chief in their department. Uh what resulted was a council resolution on what they wanted to see in not only the new police chief, but also in the Police Department, a comprehensive vetting process for candidates that involved multiple interviews from city employees from all departments, residents and law enforcement subjects and our experts. There's a comprehensive process that took about three days. It was difficult, but needed. One of the main reasons I applied for the position as chief here was the message and goals of that city council resolution. I knew that I would be coming to an agency in a city that reflected the priorities and goals that I have as a leader of a law enforcement agency. When I took over as chief, my first goal was to change the culture of the Police Department from a warrior mentality to a guardian approach. The culture that stressed engagement over educate, excuse, engagement over enforcement, compliance over citations, inclusiveness over disengagement. One of the first steps was to clearly set goals and have them directly reflected in how we evaluated the performance of our officers. We changed our evaluation system to reward community engagement and problem-solving as opposed to enforcement efforts. We evaluated all of our uh operational general orders and ensured that they followed best practices of policing. Several general orders to were revised to ensure they were consistent with the goals and objectives of the community. Uh many of you are aware of the hashtag eight can't wait use of force recommendations from Police Department put out by Campaign Zero. The recommendation, recommendations call for agencies to have policies that address the following use of force guidelines, and they were the duty to intervene, required de-escalation, ban shooting at moving vehicles, ban chokeholds and strangleholds, required comprehensive reporting for use of force incidents, required use of force continuum, required that we exhaust all means before shooting and required warning before shooting. Uh we currently have in place policies that covered to some degree all eight of the hashtag and eight can't wait recommendations. We're currently in the process of reviewing all of our use of force policies, specifically the ban on chokeholds except where deadly force is needed. And the language used in that section in the section exhaust all other means before shooting. I want to be clear, our policy does not allow officers to to use deadly force for fleeing subjects. It does not. Um you can find a link to the overview of the use of force policies in relation to the hashtag eight can't wait can be found on the city website and also on the Police Department website. Um Tacoma Park Police Department has stringent reporting guidelines for the use of force incidents. We also share our use of force data with the public in our annual report as well as the annual use of force report that is submitted to the state on an annual basis. The department policy requires use of force reporting in the following situations. I say this because a lot of agencies narrowly define what use of force is. We have a broad definition of what reporting requirements are. And you must do a use of force reporting for any use of a secondary weapon, any physical strikes, any pointing of a taser or firearm in the clear direction of an individual, non-deadly force without a weapon that results in apparent physical injury or purported claim of injury, of course deadly force in any intentional or unintentional discharge of a firearm or taser, pain and deployment with injuries or any material difference in description of use of force reported by an officer that is in reported by the subject upon whom force was used. Uh just for background as far as, as far as use of force incidents in two thousand nineteen, there were thirteen incidents in which force was used or claimed in two thousand nineteen. Um compared to seventeen the previous year, which represented about a point three point five percent decrease. Four of the thirteen use of force incidents involved euthanizing animals as compared to six in two thousand eighteen. Uh three involved a show of force which gained compliance. In two thousand nineteen, officers had a total of, handled a total of eleven thousand six hundred and eighty-seven contacts with the public, which included calls for service, self-initiated calls and traffic stops. Tacoma Park Police Department officers used force in point zero seven percent of all contacts. One area of concern is regarding complaints filed against police officers and how they're handled. I'm committed to holding officers accountable for their actions. And last night, I participated in a virtual town hall with Mayor Stewart, members of our city council and our District Twenty delegation to discuss reforms in policing and changes that can be made at the state level involving the law enforcement officers, fellow rights, that can make disciplined officers easier for management and the entire process more transparent for the public. A lot of good ideas were discussed that I support. I've openly supported having civilians sit on as members on L E O V R hearing boards. I believe this adds transparency to the process. We've also attempted to make our complete process more transparent by adding the ability to have dispute mediation available to residents and officers. We're in the final stages of making this available to all residents. The lack of transparent and disciplinary process involving officers in Maryland is a big impediment to instilling trust and transparency within law enforcement in Maryland. I'm committed to working with our state delegation to make the necessary changes, not only to the L E O V R, but also M P I A, uh which limits exposure to disciplinary records within offices. Uh the Tacoma Park Police Department requires investigations of all complaints against department, against the department or its employees. And the annual statistical summaries of such investigations And the annual statistical summaries of such investigations by Internal Affairs Function will be made, will always be made available to the public. In two thousand and nine, actually, in two thousand and nineteen, nine formal complaints were recorded. Two of those were subject to internal affairs investigations. Seven of the complaints were submitted by community members, and two of the complaints were generated by officers of our own department. One of the formal complaints was involving another jurisdiction. There were no other complaints referred anonymously, and we do take complaints anonymously. And we also do not require notarization for brutality complaints. We don't have a limitation of a time for filing complaints as other agencies do. In two thousand and seventeen, the Police Department initiated an online option to file complaints and compliments in an effort to make the process easier, more accessible. The online option included a complaint on officers from, excuse me, the online option. Say I lost my space here. The online option created transparency and made it much easier for people to file complaints. Body worn cameras are also essential in transparency. All of our patrol officers are equipped with body worn cameras and are required to activate them during all police interactions with the public. I can say I have been very transparent in releasing body worn footage. Every incident that we've had that the public demanded that the tape be released, we've released it. I am not one that's going to hold back, good, bad, or indifferent, body worn camera footage. So we're very transparent in releasing that. As I stated earlier, hiring is an absolute priority of mine. We have been very, very selective in our hiring process. Having a diverse workforce is an absolute priority of mine. In two years since I've been Chief, we've been able to hire several quality staff members and diversify our workforce. Over the last two and a half years, we've hired twenty-four new staff members. This includes seventeen police officers, four dispatchers, victim witness coordinator, Safe Speed Coordinator, and a new Crossing Guard. This group of new employees brings a vast amount of experience and diversity to our team. Of the group, eighteen are members of minority groups, nine are African-American, seven are Latinx, two are Asian, and seven are females. The new employees speak Harrick, Greek, Russian, and Spanish. We're committed to hiring a quality workforce that represents the demographics of our community. As I stated earlier, I am committed to instilling the right culture within the Police Department, hiring the right people, providing them with the required training in de-escalation, community policing, and implicit bias. We're also in the process of compiling information to provide the public on all of our training provided to our officers. Reverend Gail Fisher-Stewart, who is our Chaplain and also a Chief's Advisory Board Member, will be speaking later this evening about training she will be providing Tacoma Park officers and other area officers on the impact racism has had and currently has in policing. Lastly, Police Department leadership, and most importantly, unions, must admit we have a problem and realize how important transparency and accountability is to resolving the mistrust in the community as a law enforcement. I am committed to working with our local and state-inflected officials to make the needed changes to the L E O B R and M P I, and I look forward to working with community members in the City Council to find ways to put together the best public safety model for residents of our fine city. With that, I am open to questions.
Great, thank you, Chief. Did you want Reverend Fisher-Stewart to speak now?
Yeah, that would be great if we could have Reverend Gail Fisher-Stewart just give an overview of the training that she's going to be providing her officers. Thank you for reminding me, it's getting late.
Yeah, no, it's okay. I just, just in case you didn't want to stick around for all the questions.
Thank you, Chief. In addition to being the Police Chaplain, I have lived in Tacoma Park for thirty-five years on Dundalk Road, and so I have a personal interest in how the police act and react. After the murder of George Floyd, I develop a course for the police that's entitled to serve and protect, repairing the breach between the police and the black community. And this Wednesday, I conducted a webinar for over one hundred people using the curriculum because the public needs to know what the police need to know about the history and purpose of policing in this country, that American policing, as it was created and as it has become to be known, is to control black and brown bodies. And today's police have been caught in that web. Major police departments like Philadelphia, New York, Baltimore, Charleston, and others were formed before the end of slavery. Departments in the South were formed directly out of slave patrols to protect the planter class and return escaped enslaved persons to the plantation. And in the North, the police were to protect white society, the industrialists, from the new immigrant, those coming from Eastern Europe as opposed to Western Europe, Roman Catholics, blacks migrating from the South, and the wage earners who protested unsafe working conditions. Many of the Northern Departments had as their initial mission strike breaking to protect the property and capitalist interests of the industrialists. American policing became the line protecting the wealthy white elite from the alleged black and brown hordes and wage earners. In this training, there are four statements to which participants must assent, and if they can assent, there can be real change, and it doesn't mean that they have to agree. However, assenting opens them up to the possibility of meaningful change, and these statements are, "Racism is baked into the DNA of this country. We live in a racist society. The police are the enforcement arm of a racist society." And the last one is this, "Because of racism, our police are just as much victims as those who lie dead in our streets." This training creates safe space to explore these statements and where the police can assess whether or not their personal values support or conflict with the true mission of policing, to control black and brown bodies. If their personal values support this mission to control black and brown bodies, they probably should not be the police. If the mission of policing conflicts with officers' values, then they are given tools that will assist them in ensuring they will not be caught in the snare of the police culture that can make them do things they would not do under normal circumstances. And as we have seen, there have been calls for reform. However, since nineteen sixty-eight, the police have been in reform mode. Every plan, every piece of legislation, every tactic that has been put forth in the past couple of days has been tried before. And I should know because I have been involved in or with policing for forty-eight years, twenty years with the D C Police Department, retiring with the rank of Captain and then consulting and teaching for the past twenty-eight years. Everything we have heard to reform the police is at the tip of the iceberg. More training, more use-of-force regulations, forbidding chokeholds, although it was not a chokehold that killed Mr. Floyd. Until you get to the ice below the waterline of that iceberg where systematic systemic racism and the history of policing to include slave patrol lies, all reform will fail. It has to be admitted that the police are the enforcement arm of a racist society and that the police are not change agents. They are to maintain the status quo of society. And again, if that society is racist, they are charged with enforcing those values regardless of what it says on the side of patrol cars. When there is change, policing will always reset to the status quo. It just takes a little while to get back to it. It is the officers who join to make their communities better, who constantly struggle against the status quo and who keep American policing from imploding. However, the lure of the police culture is strong, as you saw in Buffalo. When the seventy-five-year-old man was pushed down and one officer bent down to assist him, the other officer pulled him up and told him to keep going. Just walk past this man who was lying there bleeding. And so during this training, as a previous speaker indicated, officers watch videos of police misconduct, and they are asked to critique what they see and what enables police officers to act in a way that demeans and dehumanizes. They are also asked to critique the thin blue line. They are told that the training will make them uncomfortable and they will probably want to get up and leave. This is not your usual police training, and it is not a one and done. One of the problems with policing is that training is offered without required booster shots to keep the training fresh. This gift, as I call it, has been given to Chief DeVal and other chiefs in the area to use as they see fit, and I will again be offering it in a public forum. And so I look forward to working with Chief DeVal and the members of the department and interested community members. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much for that. Just since, just following up on the last thing you said, so is that, is the training going to be open to members of the public in the future?
Yes.
Yes. Awesome. Great, because I think one of our speakers earlier.
If I can just say one thing. If I can just say one thing, I think it's really important that we are not closed in our training. I think it's important that every training that we do, if the public wants to see what we're getting, we can show them, and this is a perfect example of what we need to show them. So if someone wants to sit in on implicit bias training, they want to sit in and observe our active shooter training, they want to do these things, we welcome that. Because I think the more people understand some of the training we're doing here in Tacoma Park, I think the more they'll understand what we're trying to get to. But I think the most important thing Gail said is continual training. We don't get the booster shots we need. We get a one-time training every five years mandated by the State Training Commission, but we don't get that continual reinforcement, so we revert back to what we used to know. And Gail gave the example when we were talking on the Chief's Advisory Board earlier today about the chokehold. If an agency's taught officers how to do the chokehold originally, and then they come back two years later and say, well, no, you can't do the chokehold. You're going to do now this different hold. If you don't continue to reinforce that, when officers get in trouble, they're going to revert back to what their muscle memory was, and they're going to do the chokehold. Now, we have never taught the chokehold, but I'm using that as an example of how we need to continually reinforce not only the mental training, but also the physical muscle memory training. So I'm looking forward to this training with Gail. It's great that it's actually being offered to the community, but I also, like I said, want to offer up that to our community members to, once we put together a comprehensive overview of the training that we have for our officers, if people are interested in lesson planning, if they're interested in coming out and observing, we're welcome, we want that. And we also have a deep array of resources as far as people here in the city that are offering up training that's outside the norm of what police training is. We're open to that as well. And thank you, Gail, that was, as always, I always look up to you. You said forty-eight years, no way. Gail is a wealth of knowledge as have many, many people that sit on the Chief's Advisory Board. So thank you, Gail.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Chief. And I failed to mention when we started this work session, because I was trying to get us into it, is that, like we said last night with the town hall with the D twenty delegation, tonight is, we don't see this as the end of the conversation. We wanted to have last night and this evening to basically, I guess, answer some basic questions, to have basic information provided about what our Police Department is doing now, and then to be able to identify the places that we do want to do a deeper dive. For example, the Chief has already talked about two areas, including having more information about the trainings, continued conversation about the use-of-force policy. And so I know my colleagues probably have, I have some more questions, I know my colleagues do, but just to kind of set the stage for tonight, since it is almost eleven already, we want to, you know, get to some of these core questions about what we're doing right now, understanding that we will be coming back to and doing a deeper dive in some of these areas. Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor Stewart, and thank you, Chief, for being here with us at such a late hour. You know, you've been here for, I think, a little over two years, and I'd really be impressed with the work that you've done and how you really have been moving us toward the Police Department. You obviously have embraced the kind of the vision that we had, and our vision is going to be changing, evolving as we all understand the issues. I just, real quick, and I know other people have questions, but as you know, I've been involved in the, in the city government for quite a while, and there's two things that were really problem areas before you got here, and I'd like to know kind of how you address those two things and how you measure your success in that. And one is, there were allegations of biased treatment between officers and community members, and it was not just on major events, but it was in day-to-day interactions with the community, especially the young African-American men. And then the other question is, there were also ongoing serious allegations within the department of biased treatment between white and black officers and that led to real morale problems within the department and and problems that we could also see in promotional schemes. So, you know, management was involved in that too. So anyways, that's it for my questions for tonight. Thank you, just simple things.
Thank you. You know, those are two very, very important things, and I'll touch on the first one. And I think a lot of that had to do with the culture. When there was an organization that stressed enforcement, tickets, arrests, you know, photographing of young men of color, that's what we had here in the city of Tacoma Park. And not only did we have that culture, we had a culture that rewarded officers via the, not only the promotional process, but also their, their annual evaluations. We had something that was pretty close to a quota system when I got here. So the first thing I did was eliminated that. We were not going to reward people for going out and harassing people or traffic citations or profiling for low-level crimes that really are not significant or arrests that don't make a difference. I give you an example, I use this example, a twelve-year-old that steals a candy bar from one of our local stores. In the past, if we had an organization that stressed enforcement and tickets as a reward system, the officer wouldn't look to mediate that. They wouldn't look to the store owner to say, okay, you know, this is a twelve-year-old stealing a candy bar. Can we go a different route with that? Is there an educational piece we can do? Can the mom come up and pay for it? I reward people that are doing that mediation. In the past, the officer would be rewarded for locking up that twelve-year-old. So what you're doing is you're starting a cycle very early on of a twelve-year-old being involved in the criminal justice system. That was about, if you're talking about the disproportionate contacts we were having with youth of color and negative contacts with enforcements that really had no bearing on the quality of life within our city, it started with the culture and the reward system that we have within the Police Department. I was not going to tolerate this random photographs of young men of color. I have been there and photographed for no reason. My sons have been photographed for no reason, just because you matched the description. I'm not going to tolerate that here. So that's why we began to eliminate that, but we also began to make inroads with our youth, our young youth by making connections through our homework program, getting them very, very early within the elementary school and developing positive connections. Having the first interaction they have with a police officer being at a homework club helping with their homework as opposed to us being in their house, locking up their father, doing whatever. So we're trying to create a culture where police officers, if they were seen, it wasn't, why are you here? But one of the things we also did, like I said, the homework club, our Explorer Program, were also making a connection with all of our schools. One of the first things I did when I got here, I made a connection with the principals of every school in the city. And I felt that was extremely important, so we had that direct connection with our schools. So we participated in numerous events. So customarily before, if a Tacoma Park police officer showed up in one of our schools, the question would be, what the hell are you doing here? As opposed to now, it's customary to see an officer walk in the school and no one's shocked to see the officer there. So I think it goes back to what is the reward system? What do I, as Chief, expect my officers to do? But it cannot be inconsistent with what the evaluation system is, what our policies and procedures are. So it's a unilateral approach, and that's how I think we begin making inroads with, most importantly, our youth of color that just did not trust the police. Now, are we there? No. Do we need to do more? Yes. As far as the internal culture of the Police Department, I will be honest, the previous administration the previous administration, I liked that dissent. They liked the "us against them" mentality. You know, I always told people that you're not going to get points with me by, you know, trying to bring someone else down. You get points by helping the other person. So once again, it goes back to the culture. If you have a culture that supports people trying to tear down other people, then that's what you're going to get, you're going to get in-fighting. And then there was a lot of, you mentioned it earlier, there was a lot of racial tension here in the police department. Like I say, a lot of that was the culture of the police department. There also wasn't a lot of transparency in the promotional process and so on and so forth. One of the first things I did was came in and we had an outside vendor come in and do the promotional process. There was no favorites, it was not done internally, so people felt they were getting a fair, impartial promotional process. So my goal is to have quality people, but also people at all levels that reflect the diversity of the city. Not only our line officers, which we've made tremendous efforts in, in getting people that are, reflect the diversity of the city, but also making sure that I, as the chief, as deputy chief, and so on, we also have that diversity within our ranks. One of my fondest memories is, I think I was about 15 years old, and I remember when Tony Fisher became the first African-American chief here. And I could not believe when I met him, that he was such a personal guy. And he said, "You know what? I never thought I'd be here, but I'm here." So I'm trying to have that same influence, not only me, but all of my staff and other people here in the city, because I know the impact it had on them.
I thank you so much, and I think I was right, they were easy questions. It's always easy when you know what you're doing and doing a good job, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, and I just want to underscore the work with the principals in our area and remind folks that we do have three schools right near our community center on Maple Avenue. And I will say before the chief got here, you know, having a close relationship with the schools, so that way, when you are called in, the principals know you, the staff know you, is really important. And I will say that each of the principals in the local area have reached out to me over the years and said, you know, it was, they were very thankful for those, that ability to know the officers when things were happening. So, thank you. Let's see, Councilwoman CRC?
Hello, thank you so much, Chief. I have a few questions, and first let me start by saying I appreciate all of the work that you've been doing with our police department in such a short amount of time. You know, one thing that I've experienced firsthand is how it takes time to change culture, because changing culture usually involves changing the people, right? Shifting people out and bringing in new people that meet the spirit of what it is that you're trying to build. So I commend you for the work that you've been doing thus far. But one of the things that has really come to light for me is this whole notion of making sure that we're not asking police to do the work that really should be done by social workers or really should be done by people who are familiar, mental health workers, crisis managers. I, I wouldn't want my roofer serving as my dentist, right? Both have skill sets that are very important, but I don't want their roles to switch, right? So one of my thoughts is, you know, have you given thought, because I know that we were talking about issues in terms of the hospital relocation and the fact that we had the number of mental health cases in the city and a lot of responses related to, to those types of incidents, have you given thought to the possibility of bringing on non-police staff for the purpose of providing more social service responses to calls where that's needed?
I think that's a great question, and there's, you know, absolutely, there is a, there is a mental health need here in the city that we, you know, we have a lot of people in need. So absolutely, I, I think that there's an absolute benefit in having crisis intervention, mental health professionals on certain calls for service. We've had several calls since I've been here that we could really benefit from having the crisis intervention team come out. And we've tried to, as much as possible, use that model, but I absolutely would support trying to understand how we could do that either at a city level or a county level. Because I do think there are so many calls that we respond to that are not necessarily police calls, whether it be anything from the man who's in mental distress at Tacoma Towers because he just, he needs assistance but refuses to do so. Though, on that particular call, we called the crisis intervention team because we felt they were better suited to respond. Because a lot of times, the presence of police on incidents like that can escalate incidents. Now, our crisis intervention team currently has a policy that they still want police on the scene. So we really need to look at that model, but to answer your question, I absolutely do support having some type of component, mental health component, be able to address some of these needs. We have one individual here in the city that we have had to conduct a mental evaluation on about three or four times. We've also arrested him multiple times. The last time we dealt with him, he was banging on the windows of the police station. By the time we found him, he was laying in the middle of Philadelphia. We ended up having to, we ended up taking him in custody to get him a mental evaluation. We ended up having two officers for four hours, having to go all the way up to Shady Grove to transport him up there. About 24 hours later, I saw him sitting on the bench in front of Piney Branch Elementary School. And what that says is that he is not getting the help he needs at the county level to not continually cycle through this process. So it's not only having mental health professionals that will respond either with the police or in lieu of the police, but it also is making sure that we have mental health capacity. We have housing for people that are in need, so we don't have to deal with homeless individuals, the vast majority that do have mental, mental issues. These are important things that I am absolutely open to. But we also need to understand that we have a large portion of our community that, that says, they, they think they walk the walk, but they might talk the talk, but they don't walk the walk as far as contacting us when they see people that are suspicious. And when we ask them, "Well, what's suspicious about them?", well, they, they give every description about their clothing, other than they get to the point that they're black. So we also need to educate our community about calling us for stuff that's not police-related or calling us because their 12-year-old won't give their remote back to their mother. So there's a lot of education piece, but to answer your original question, absolutely, I think that there is a place that mental health professionals embedded, whether it be in the police department or what have you. Now, there needs to be an understanding and reality that a lot of these situations, especially domestic violence cases and mental health cases, people are extremely violent. So we need to make that assessment. So I think if we develop a task force here in the city, one of the most important things is how do we address these calls for service that should be transferred from traditional police response to other means? And absolutely, I don't know of any police officer that, that would not want to turn over some of the calls for service. Now, don't get me wrong, a lot of people become the police, and we're looking for people that want to become the police because they want to have interactions with the community. So I don't want to limit police so that all they do is an enforcement aspect. I think it's important to have our police interacting with the community on a non-enforcement basis and handle different events. Because I think our officers, at least the ones we're hiring, that's what we hired them to do, to be that protector and be part of the community. But I think there are ways, absolutely. We are limited within our resources at a city government in kind of putting that mental health model in, but absolutely, I, I think that it's, it's a reality of where we need to go. And I'm definitely open to having, whether that it's embedded in the city police department as part of a county response or whatever we deem appropriate and best.
Yeah, I, I would love, and I know Councilmember Simmons has mentioned this a couple of times, I would love to see a task force where not just, you know, residents who are familiar with social justice needs, but also bringing on people who are experts in areas of mental health and housing and bringing those experts together so that we can do a deeper dive into some of the types of calls you receive, the policies you have in place to dealing with those types of calls, and then come up with ways to kind of restructure how, how that process works and make, perhaps, how staff are allocated as a result, you know? I think that's going to be really important. One question I have, and this might be for the city manager. So the county provides us with quite a bit of reimbursement, and we've heard from our economic development manager, as well as our housing manager, about the shortage of resources, right? Even in light of COVID, there's a shortage of resources in terms of workforce development, which is really, 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 really critical. You know, people who have, particularly black and brown people, and men in particular, who have a, a job, right? Are less likely to find themselves in some, some difficult situations that might lead to a, a negative interaction with the police, as well as, you know, housing issues and the need for making sure that we're addressing homeless issues in the city. So the, the county currently reimburses the police. Is it just for staffing? Like, how does that reimbursement work? Because we're often told that there aren't as many resources for things like housing and, and like workforce development, but there seems to be a lot of county money and state money for reimbursing for police services.
Well, let me just-
So, well-
Go ahead, go ahead, city manager can go first.
So the way that the tax duplication works is that we are supposed to be receiving funds from the county that approximate the amount of money that the county would spend for policing if they were in charge of policing in Tacoma Park. Now, the calculation for how that's done is woefully out of date. It was, it's based on a formula from 1999. It is not how policing is done. It's in a, and it really only responds to the amount of time spent on calls for service, which isn't community policing. Now, that may or may not be the right answer, especially if there's a "defund the police" effort at the county level. It, it may have repercussions in our, in our way, but right now, we have taxpayers that pay money to both the county and the city for police services, and they don't get assistance from the county police, and that's the, that's the essence of that. The larger question's really important, though, about what makes this a safe and livable community and how are the services and housing, in, in having jobs, having childcare with jobs, so that you can go to your job, all builds a community where you are not in trouble if your car breaks down and you don't have the money for it, that doesn't aggravate those, the, the mental crises simply because of the problems with financial pressures and that kind of thing. And I do want to go to the point that the state is terrible about community mental health policing and, and mental health services. We want mental, community mental health services in Tacoma Park, actually. And if you talk to the folks at the state, they say, "Yeah, that's, it's a real lack, we don't have that." Those kinds of things could offset people from going to a crisis situation, which then requires the, you know, the community teams coming in and the police coming in. It could actually resolve the problem. So all of those things, Councilmember CRC, are important for, for good public service and public safety. And I think we have to look at it as a whole, we talked earlier about a buffet of services, we're talking about a whole, a whole buffet of services that really are needed for livability.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Chief, before I go to my next colleague, I just want to ask you, do you know, and I don't know if Gail is still on the line, but this issue of when to call the police and not to do, having residents, you know, make these calls that are really on profiling, is there any trainings on that or things that you've seen that are often offered to the public?
We, we had an incident about a year ago, and we put out a lot of public safety or a lot of information out to the public on our social media about, you know, what, when you should call the police, what's not suspicious. It's not suspicious if you see a boy on a girl's bike. It's not suspicious if you see someone who doesn't look like you in a neighborhood, that doesn't, you know, all of those things. But we, one of the discussion points we're having, and we had the chief's advisory board and others, was developing some type of training within the community about that and some type of educational tools, so people understand. I can tell you, even when we did those social media blasts, people still are calling us. Now, what we've done is we've educated our dispatchers to say, "Okay, well, the only reason you're calling is because they're black, or the only reason you're calling is because it's a boy on a girl's bike, well, thanks, but we're not going to respond." So part of it is on our part to educate our dispatchers to not dispatch these calls, but also educate the public. So absolutely, that's one thing I think that is part of this, is, is getting some training for our public. When we talk about training for the police department, it's also important to have training or an understanding for the community as well, because a lot of the cause and effect is someone calling in and the police feeling obligated to respond. So we can check on that, but I, I think that would be spot-on. We're going to put, we're trying to put together a training of the do's and don'ts of the frequently asked questions. If I get stopped by a police officer in a dark area, is it okay for me to ask to drive to another area? If I get dropped off on a traffic stop, am I required to provide my identification? So I think that could be part of that bigger discussion. But I think educating the public on what is racial profiling and racist is paramount, because that's part of the problem here, is we still get people making these calls. And hopefully, through education and possibly training, that can change.
Thank you, just thinking people are home still, like, I'm to put on a webinar. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you. First, Chief, I want to thank you for talking to us this evening. You know, I've always thought of you as a transformational leader. What you have done in the department is extremely impressive. I was first elected when the other administration started. So I know all the things that you mentioned intimately, and I am, I am proud that you are making changes. Pastor Dr. Gail Fisher-Stewart, I thank you so much for your remarks. What I have seen, you know, I've been around since Eric Gardner, and when, when he was on the ground, talking about how he couldn't breathe. Fast forward now, we have George Floyd, we have the brother in, in Atlanta being shot in the back. So, you know, we've, as previous councils have looked at different ways how we can make changes in the police department, improve things. But, you know, I continue to go back to what our pastor said. It's, it's about systemic racism, white supremacy, which is at the foundation of all of us. The way policing is done, and Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, is done in white communities is very different than what is done in black communities. It's just a different type of approach. And I don't know how we fix that problem, right? We can go, we can send the guys to training. We can, you know, require them to sign a pledge, you know, "Please don't be racist," right? But how is it this fundamental issue?
I, I think it's not just an issue of race, it's also an issue of socioeconomic status. I think traditionally, our communities that are, you know, have less social and economic status get disproportionately policed, and traditionally, a lot of that is our, our communities of color. So absolutely, you know, I, I, and it's, I don't want this to sound like a negative, but yes, absolutely, I think our communities of color are policed differently. Now, that being said, I think it's important, if you have a culture where everyone who we interact- who we interact with is respected in the same fashion, we are not looking at our communities of color as problem communities. We're looking at how we can go in and resolve problems, not cause problems. I think that what it has a lot to do with it. And it has a lot to do with getting to know people. And it has a lot to do with us, and not us versus them, but us. So the way that we do that is a culture. And, and making it comfortable for people to feel comfortable. And a lot of that has to do as well, and I've said this before, having our officers live within the communities they serve. If you shop at the same grocery store, you eat at the same restaurant, you're socialized with people outside of work, you're more apt to feel part of that community. But that's a conversation that we haven't had tonight, but I think that's a conversation that we need to have when we talk about a public safety model, is how can we incentivize our officers to live here in Tacoma Park or live within these, our communities? Because once officers become part of communities, I think there's more, less of that stigma. Now, everyone has implicit bias, and that's gonna be there. I have it, you have it, everyone on the council has it. It's how do we understand what our implicit biases do as we interact with other people that we need to make sure officers are, know that? It is also incumbent to not hire officers that we know are racist. And we do a pretty thorough job of vetting our, um, recruits before we hire them. Deep dive into their social media, deep dive into their backgrounds, all of these things to ensure that we're not hiring abuse, like, you know, acutely racist people. But absolutely, I think that, that it's not just here in Tacoma Park, but it's all of our agencies. People have to feel comfortable interacting with the police. And a lot of that does have to do with people, you know, having a, having police officers that look like the community in which we serve. But a lot of times, um, the worst cop can be the black or brown cop. Those of you who know the movie Boys in the Hood, the worst cop was the black cop. So I, I understand what you're saying, and I, but I think we need to take a systematic approach to all the things that are causing the poverty, causing the housing, causing the issues, causing people to, 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 you know, to be homeless. All of these things that cause our communities of color to be disproportionately policed. So I, I think that's another thing, at least at a city level, that a task force would look at as far as what can we do from our less affluent, affluent communities? You know, there's a big cross-section of people with the haves and have-nots here in the city of Tacoma. So what do we do to bring up everyone in the city? So they're not being disproportionately policed by our city, disproportionately policed by Prince George County or Montgomery County. Um, but I think it's a holistic approach, not just law enforcement, but the issues that are causing the poverty, the issues of causing the lack of education, the issues that are causing substance abuse and mental health, um, issues. If we don't address that, and I think Ms., uh, Reverend Gail Fisher Stewart hit the nail on the head. If we don't address racism in our society, no matter what we do with police, we're still going to come back to the same promise, because police are, are, are kind of the, the overseers of what the community is. And if the community is racist, it's gonna make it hard to reform police.
Right, right. I, I agree one hundred percent. Uh, how many of our officers currently live in Tacoma Park?
We currently, I think, have two officers that live here. Um, we have several officers that grew up here, including myself. Um, I grew up here in the cities. We have several officers that grew up here. But I can be honest, be honest with you, it is really hard financially on a police officer's salary to live in the city. It is. We really need to start, in my opinion, start with incentivizing rentals for our younger officers that might not be able to afford, uh, you know, something here. But maybe if we had some, some incentive for them to live here, some incentive for them to purchase here. Um, you know, I, I was looking at houses here in the city. And I make a pretty good salary, and it was a struggle for me to find something that was affordable. So I think, um, finding ways to incentivize officers, and I, and I don't, I don't know what that answer is. Uh, Councilman, uh, Member Siemens and I have, I've talked about it and other council members. So, um, I wish we had more that lived here. I, I, I wish we did, but, but I, I can be honest, financially, it's really difficult.
Now, as you know, a outside player in, in any type of reforms with the, the police as a whole is the union. What ideas do you have of how we can, you know, incorporate what the union is saying? But at the same time, do not try to put up all these roadblocks when we're making these improvements? Would I consider improvements to policing? Do you have any ideas?
Well, I, as, as I said earlier, I think one of the keys to solving the problem is for not only leaders of law enforcement agencies, but unions to admit that we have a problem. Um, you know, we have local four hundred here in the city of Tacoma Park, which I, I will say, coming from a law enforcement agency that had an F O P, um, is a lot easier to deal with. And I think they are very receptive to some of the changes, um, and have been pretty good to work with. Now, when you're talking about the difference between local four hundred and the F O P, uh, when I came from the park police, uh, we had, like I said, we had an F O P, and they were very resistant to everything. I mean, I'll give you an example, just the wearing of masks. We were able to, to, uh, impose a mandatory mask-wearing policy for all of our staff as they interacted with the public, and they went about in, in our, uh, in the police department buildings. We were able to do that with no pushback from local four hundred. The county police had massive resistance from local thirty-five about wearing masks. We're talking about common sense health issues. Uh, the county police took a year to transition to their new uniform because they talked about whether or not they wear one or two patches on their uniform. So I think that, that, that if the unions do not wake up and understand that we are at a crossroads in our profession, um, it, it's, it, it, it's gonna be catastrophic for them. Because I, I think, um, you know, I see a lot of resistance from a lot of unions with some of these egregious cases, where they find ways to defend officers. That's not a good look. I think there needs to be an understanding. So I, I, like, here in the city, it's a little bit grayer, because I don't think we have that huge problem, uh, of the union not getting what we're doing. I think that's more at a state level, and especially at a county level, where they have probably the strongest F O P, um, in the state, probably in the region. Um, so I think as we move forward with revising L E O V R, revising the M P I A, it's very important that the union understand that change is coming. And either get on board and be a participant in that change, or change is gonna pass you by. Um, you know, it's, um, you know, it's a, it's a difficult thing, because I, I understand what unions want to do. Uh, but I think that our profession, if we work together, unions, our community, our elected officials, and leaders of law enforcement agencies, we're gonna come out the other end much better. Um, I told a group earlier today, I said, I see this as an opportunity for reformers within policing to now be able to take the L E O V R, which is so hard to change, take other things that are so hard to change, refocus some of our resources. And if you're not in the game to do that, you need to get out of the game. So I think there are a lot of people, like, when I came here, there was some, a few people that left because they, they just didn't like what we were doing. So I think law enforcement in general, or the public safety model in general, is no longer going to allow people that are not on board with understanding what the impact of racism in it is in law enforcement, what the impact of racism is in our society as a whole. So I, I think we are now there. And the first time in my twenty-seven-year career, I feel like we are at a crossroads where people are going to be forced, unions are going to be forced to make change. That's what my hope is. But I say to every resident of Tacoma Park, every resident of Montgomery County, and every resident of the state of Maryland, they need to be talking to their elected officials and putting pressure on them to make changes. When we were on the D twenty call last night, everyone on that call, everyone representative from D twenty was in line with police reform. Not everyone in the state is. And we come from a blue state that, that, that really wants to see police reform, but understand a large proportion of our, of our state does not, is not in line and step with what we want to do. There were several really smart ideas about revising L E O V R that did not make it through at the state level a couple of years ago after the Freddie Gate spray incident. So I, I think that, that my role is to try to include, if we have a task force, let's include members of our union in that task force in making decisions. I want everyone at the table that's gonna have, you know, input on what we need to do. And I think that inclusiveness has got to be there.
Uh, you know, I, I don't just look at you as a chief, I think you're a policy expert. Can you explain why in, like, western countries like Japan and Great Britain, their beat officers don't carry guns? Why is it that in America, a patrolman, twenty-some-year-old, whatever the minimum required age is, to be a police officer, go through the academy? Why is it that we insist that they must carry a firearm?
I, one thing, and one thing first and foremost, the prevalence of, of weapons in our society. We have way too many weapons. So in other societies, England, other, um, other countries, they do not have the prevalence of weapons that we have. Um, people are allowed to have high-powered assault rifles, um, handguns, you name it. Um, the sidearms that we carry, um, a nine-millimeter Glock pales in comparison to what we could be up against. So I think that's another part of, if you're talking about, uh, public safety reform as addressing gun control, because as long as we have the prevalence of weapons in our society, I find it hard for police not to be armed, to be able to respond. Um, over the last month, we have taken, I think, six or seven guns off of people here in the city of Tacoma Park. We had an armed carjacking, we had a strong-arm robbery, we had another armed robbery. The prevalence of weapons when we respond to these calls, it's there. So I think that if you're asking why we in the United States have armed police, I would say it's driven, Tony DeVall's opinion is directly related to the prevalence of weapons and accessibility of weapons here in the United States.
All right. Thank you so much, chief.
Great, thank you. Um, let's see, who is next? We have Councilwoman Kostic.
Thank you very much. Um, thank you, Chief DeVall, for all of you, the information you've shared tonight, um, the information you've shared up until now, um, and, um, for being so willing to have this conversation. I, I, I think this is really the conversation we need to be having, and I'm, I'm so appreciative that you are enthusiastic to partner with us and to partner with the community on this issue, and, and to make sure that we, um, are doing it right and, and, and being innovative as we do it. Um, Reverend Fisher Stewart, I, I really want to thank you also. Um, I, I feel like what you said was, was so exciting and so what we need. I, I'm so excited to have our police be a part of that, because it seems like it's just really what we need to have them do and, and what we need our community, um, to be taking part in. So thank you so much, and I really look forward to that and, and to that, as you said, being an ongoing thing. And it's not just a one-and-done, but it, it really needs to be something that is done over and over and over again. Um, I, I think a, a lot of the questions, um, that have been asked tonight were things that were on my mind, so I don't want to reiterate those things, um, just right now in the interest of time. Um, and I, I appreciate, I, I sent you a long list earlier today, Chief DeVall, and I really appreciate your, your responses to those things and looking into those. Um, I, my, one of my questions was, um, specifically also focused on the discussion regarding, um, social services versus quote-unquote crimes. And, um, involving more social workers, less police, redirecting those sorts of, those funds, those calls that are not, um, directly related to a crime situation, like you mentioned, the twelve-year-olds, having some, someone other than a police officer um, attending to some of those situations. And, and I appreciate the point you made with regard to not wanting police to only be enforcers, because I think that makes a lot of sense. But also, um, the fact that they can escalate the situation, um, maybe not with a twelve-year-old in, in most cases, but with, with adults in particular, or young adults. Um, so I, I would be curious in exploring the number of calls that we get in terms of looking at the data longer, not, not for tonight, but longer term, looking at the data and, and kind of parsing out, how many calls are we getting that are sort of traditional crimes that really need, um, someone going there, you know, in an enforcement capacity versus someone to assist with social services and mental health, um, and, and assistance? Um, the other thing I, I have seen, just in interacting with, um, residents, is that I, I think there isn't a place for people to call or reach out to when there are those situations that are not crimes. And so, you know, I've had people contacting me and say, there's someone else, you know, sleeping outside of my house, or someone sleeping in this park. And I can call nine-one-one, that's a number I know, but I don't necessarily want the police to come and, um, and harass this person. And I very much appreciate that in, in the way that our police typically handle these situations, that is not how it's done. But, um, I think it just sort of starts off with, um, kind of a, a paradigm of already setting things up to be a crime or, um, something that, that puts people into the police interaction in the first place. So I would be really interested in exploring some type of model where we could maybe have a, a way to redirect some of those, those calls, or, or whether it's going to nine-one-one directly or to some other place, just to have another place that those, those calls can go and, and people can go to when they're experiencing crises that don't require the police directly, but really do require some type of rapid response and assistance. Um, I, one of the things I learned about just yesterday at the National League of Cities meeting, um, that I, I think we should look into and, and explore further is, um, Greenbelt. The city of Greenbelt has, um, a, um, I believe it's kind of a public-private cooperation um, called Greenbelt Cares, which is, um, a counseling and mental health assistance program that they provide to residents, in coordination with the city of Greenbelt. Um, so that might be a model we could potentially look into. Um, and I know cities across the country are looking into, you know, developing community safety or public safety, um, de- departments or, uh, groups that sort of replace some of those roles of police. Um, so in terms of the, we, we talked a little bit about people calling in for things that might not be, um, rising to the level of requiring, um, police response, but also people calling in for, you know, racial profiling situations where someone is doing nothing wrong, but someone feels that they are. And, um, I'm wondering, in those cases, um, what latitude does the police have to, to not respond? Or to respond, drive by, say, this doesn't look like a problem, I'm not going to get out of my car and stop? But what, when does it, what is the requirement for actually getting out, you know, talking with the people, checking their IDs, making sure that people are, um, you know, doing what they're supposed to be doing, quote-unquote, um, when there's a call that police may themselves know pretty immediately is, is focus and may not require any action on their part?
Um, well, I will say, if, if someone calls in and it does not require any action, we won't respond. But that, that's a difficult question to answer, because there's also many different factors that come into play, um, for a call for service. Um, have we had, uh, you know, previous burglaries in the area? Is it three o'clock in the morning as opposed to three o'clock in the afternoon? But there's really not any easy answer to that. Um, but I will say, if someone calls in and it's not a call for service, we just won't dispatch an officer, we'll tell them that's not a police call. Um, and that's what we've done a lot recently, is, with all due respect, that's not a police call. Um, we'll either refer them to the appropriate entity or just tell them, we're not going to respond just because a male was riding a girl's bike. But if you're talking about, you know, what do we do on calls? I, I guess, without a specific example, it's really hard to define, because, um, you know, time and circumstance are so important. Um, so there's a difference between, you know, someone's cutting through my backyard at three o'clock in the morning as opposed to someone's cutting through my backyard at three o'clock afternoon. So it's a broader discussion we need to have, but, but it's, on some of these things, and that's the problem with this, there's no clear answer. Um, it is a lot of gray area. Um, so what we're trying to do on those frequently asked questions I talked about is come up with those questions that there really is no gray area. Like, what is your, um, legal responsibility to produce your ID if there's a stop by a police officer? Do you have the right to ask a police officer to drive to a more secure area? Do you have the right to ask a police officer to drive to a more secure area? If you're a passenger in a vehicle on a traffic stop and you've done nothing wrong, can an officer ask for your ID? All of those things are pretty cut and dry, but, but what you're asking, I really, um, you know, it, it's more of a case by case basis. Like I said, I started out, I say, the main thing is if it's not a police call, we don't respond, we, we just don't. And most likely, most of the times it's something that we refer to another, um, another agency within the city, um, or, or so on and so forth. I think that, and going back to the mental health call, and I think we, we also need to distinguish the kinds of mental health calls. From understanding that Greenbelt cares is a proactive thing, yet not a responsive thing. So, um, there's a difference between somebody calling the police department and saying, uh, you know, I'm going to kill my whole family or I'm going to kill myself, um, then hey, I feel like I need help. There's a difference in those calls. Um, so there's a, a different degree of mental health calls. Does the person have a gun and they're, you know, they're threatening to, to kill their family members themselves and they're in crisis? Or are they just saying, I just need help, I really want someone to take me to the hospital or I need to talk to someone? So clearly distinguishing those type of calls, clearly distinguishing, um, you know, some type of homeless unit. Um, when I was with the park police, we had a homeless encampment unit and we didn't send out officers. We sent out officers originally, we ascertained whether or not it, it, the area was safe. We marked it with GPS coordinates and then we would have civilian staff go out and, and go back out and check on these people. So finding ways that we could address these homeless calls, uh, mental health calls. But I think the Greenbelt cares model is good because it's proactive. Identifying people within our community that are in crisis that need constant care as opposed to responding on the back end because now they are in crisis. But I like that model at, for one thing, is being proactive and addressing people within our community that are suffering from mental health issues, um, but also having a response component where someone is now in distress.
Sorry, I'm muted. Yeah, thank you very much. Um, uh, many other questions, but the other thing I just wanted to check in with you tonight on, and I know you are compiling some more information, so you might not have a complete answer at the moment, but was, um, training overall? So I, we talked a little bit about some of the training that is needed, um, but I don't feel like I have a full understanding right now of what kind of training is provided and required.
Um, yeah, I, I can give a kind of a brief, a reader's digest version of what is required. Uh, for an officer to be certified in the state of Maryland, they originally go through a six month police academy. Uh, that's where they get comprehensive firearm training, interacting with people, crisis intervention, driving, you name it, a whole spectrum of what it is to be a police officer. When they successfully complete that academy, and the vast majority of our cadets go through the Montgomery County Police Academy, which is, is a really good police academy. I think they have a, really are committed to a, a guardian approach as opposed to a warrior approach. Once they get out of that six month police academy, they are required to do a twelve week, um, FDO program where they ride with a seasoned officer and that seasoned officer observes them and grades them and teaches them how to be a full service officer. Once they become full service officers, they're required to go through eighteen hours annually of in-service training through the Maryland Police Training Commission. Now, the Maryland Police Training Commission on an annual basis requires firearms annually and there are other requirements that they do annually. They also have requirements for, um, anything from first aid to de-escalation to crisis intervention. These are things that are required by the state for officers to keep their certification. Above that training, we also have training that we send officers to. All of our officers went through the implicit bias training, uh, we went through active shooter training. Um, we try to get people involved in training that is consistent with what we're trying to do here in the city of Tacoma Park, above and beyond the eighteen hour core trainings that they get with, are, are required to do within the police training commission. Um, things like going down to the African American museum and having officers go through the experience, the law enforcement experience, the perspective of African Americans. Um, having staff, um, go to training for implicit bias, having staff go to de-escalation training. All of these things are important. And I think that we also, and just above that, we also send our staff to training courses, which I think are, are extremely important. Um, the IACP has an annual training conference that we, we are able to go and meet with, I'm able to meet with, with chiefs from across the country and talk about best practices, what we've imposed as far as changes within our organization. So it's a continual thing, and I think the most important thing Gail said is we need continual booster shots. We just don't want to get that one shot at the beginning because that doesn't stick. So what we try to do is have continuing reinforcement. And aside from all that official training that I've talked about, we also have roll call training. On a continuous basis, we'll go over general orders, we'll go over, um, use of force, we'll go over certain things. So in addition to, you know, you are off of the road because you're going to this training. We also have the daily roll call training where we try to go through, uh, certain things. We also, first importantly, debrief incidents. So all of our staff reviewed the George Floyd tape in its entirety. All of our staff have looked at these type of incidents to debrief and discuss. Um, you know, obviously the George Floyd case wasn't hard to say, well, they did nothing right. But there are other police involved cases where you may be able to play devil's advocate and say, okay, well, maybe the officer could have done this. So not all cases result in death, some cases result in, you know, an officer fleeing or something. But that's educational for us as well. And we also debrief incident that, incidents that our officers are involved in. We all have body one cameras, so we're able to go back and allow them to watch themselves on traffic stops or watch themselves on calls for service to say, okay, well, yeah, maybe I wasn't real abrasive or, you know, maybe I didn't handle that the way I should have. So training is a continual process, but it's not just the traditional training. It is everything we do. When supervisors see behavior that they think, you know, isn't the best, they are required to then give remedial training to officers to make them better. So I, I think the thing that we've really done here is try to go above and beyond in what we give our officers as far as training. And obviously that, that costs money, but it's important that we do. So when we talk about cutting money from a budget that's ninety percent personnel, understand we don't have that much to be able to pay for these classes. We do a lot by, by trying to host classes, we're getting free slots, but, um, you know, training is absolutely important, but also continuous training.
I'd like to add, uh, just a couple of things to that. Um, one of the things you didn't mention, Chief, is if somebody has had some, uh, driving incidents or other kinds of things, it gets put into a, the, um, program that follows, um, incidents with each officer. And it will say, oh, you need to have more driver training or you need some, you know. So there's something that, um, toggles extra training. The other thing that I think is important that has not been talked about this evening is, what support we give to people at the higher levels of the department for management, for effective supervision, for being able to document and discipline and encourage and mentor, all of those things, which frankly, you know, are things that get criticized for spending money on, or take time when you're in a very, uh, you don't have that many staff. Really though, are really valuable and it's how you enforce the, the things that we're all talking about. If you don't have the supervisors to say, you know, you should not have done that. This is, this is, you know, writing it up, documenting it, taking it to a disciplinary case if it needs to, because they're not trained well in how to do it. They don't, you know, they don't feel like they have time to do it, then, then that's a disservice to the whole department. And so, so those things I think, um, do require a lot of attention and they tend not to be, uh, paid that much attention to in these larger discussions.
Yeah, uh, thank you for that. And, and the, the database you're talking about is our, our IA Pro system and it tracks all complaints that come in. And officers are flagged if they get to a certain spot. And if officers have two at fall accidents, they're required to go through driver training. What's most important about that tracking system is we can notice a problem officer. So if we're documented and tracking, we can make sure that we're addressing this behavior and it doesn't come back years later and they've had four accidents and no one knew about it. Uh, one of the most important things I came in, when I, when I came here is I saw a lack of training force at the supervisor level. We had people getting promoted to the rank of sergeant and lieutenant that got no training. They just gave them their stuff, they didn't shadow another officer, they didn't get training. So that's something we started because we're asking people to be supervisors and we're not giving them training, we're setting them up to fail. And we also have sent some of our senior staff to the Northwest Executive School, um, which is a twelve week school that is just extremely comprehensive in how to be a leader. Uh, we've also sent, sent people to the FBI National Academy, which is free, um, which is a ten week program. I attended it when I was with the park police, which is extremely educational, best practices in policing. So not, I, I, I'm glad that, that, um, Ms. Leno brought that up because just as important for training for our line officers is training not only for me as chief and best practices, but also training for our supervisory staff for the ones out guiding the younger line staff.
Thank you very much. Sorry, couldn't unmute myself. Um, Councilman DeBala.
Yes, um, thank you, Chief, for being here, for discussing this, for being willing to, and, and more than willing to have this come, start this conversation, um, which I think is long overdue and I really appreciate it. And thank you to the Reverend, I can't wait to sign up for your class. I have some, some factual questions that I'll just put out briefly and, and write down for you to think about, you know, to respond to later. Um, and then just a couple of broader things to say, cause it's getting late. I, I was interested in, you, you say you give a summary of complaints against officers. I assume there are some legal reasons why you don't, you aren't able to be transparent about the details of particular cases, complaints?
Not, not particular cases, but we, we do have listed in our internal affairs report what the discipline we imposed, we imposed on officers as a result of those investigations. We don't list names, but we were transparent. And when I came here, we started posting what the discipline was imposed as a result of those, uh, as a result of those investigations. Um, we now cannot list individual names because of MPIA. And that's something that we're looking at changing. But, but yeah, we do list at least the discipline that we imposed as a result of being there.
Right. So the point being you go as far as you can, given the current state law.
Yes.
Actually, yeah. Um, I, I, I'm also interested in some of the breaks, breakdowns about your, um, your patrol, your sworn officers versus your support staff, the, the numbers, the functions, the, the dollars that go with that, just, you know, gross level. Um, cause I think residents are following up on what you said. I think residents are interested in, oh, what else, what other public safety functions does the city, does this department fulfill? Going a little broader, because I think, I think it is not just you fabulous police reform effort. And it's, and as we've said, it's not just about police reform and it's not just about working within the, the police box. It's all of these broader issues that we've touched on tonight. So, um, I, I would be interested in your, in your thoughts on, on how we structure our conversation. Do we have a task force? Do we do something different? We do a bunch of different things to explore these different areas. Um, one area that I'd like to put out is, um, not just parking, but the whole question of traffic stops and, and running stop signs. I've had people say to me, why do we need officers doing that? And, and I don't want to have that conversation tonight, I'm just saying that's another area I'd like to explore. And I, and I, um, it's getting late. Um, couple of, respond, yours, again, your response is not right now, but, um, questions to discuss. One of, um, the former, a former council member Tim Mail put out a number of suggestions. I'd like to get your response to them at some point. The eleven, uh, suggestions that, that he put forward. And, and a question I've been asked a number of times, why forty-three officers, why not, why not fifty and why not twenty-five? That gets to that question of who does what and what the best use of the highly trained, as we just discussed, highly trained officers versus, uh, versus other types of, of staff. Get your, get your thoughts on that at some point. I think that's it for me for tonight. Thank you.
Then Councilmember Kovar.
Thank you and thank you, Chief. I appreciate it. I'll try to, um, move quickly, I have a few things I'll send to you separately, but I appreciate your being here and taking the time to, to talk with us. Um, and I'm glad that, uh, Councilmember Smith mentioned that, and that you called up on this question of the cost of housing here. And we've talked in the past about potentially, um, using some of the money in the housing reserve fund to assist. It wouldn't necessarily have to be limited to police, but other city staff and being able to live here. And I think that's something that, uh, a number of people in the community have talked to me about. So I, I hope we can get to that separately. If I, if I understand correctly, you, um, you, you cited the, the figures on the more diverse workforce that you've been hiring. And if I'm not mistaken, there's some connection on that to, um, a different academy that, that we've been using. If that's right, can you just talk about that for a minute? Explain to people what happened there or a, a source within the academy?
Um, what we did is we, 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 instead of going our traditional recruiting routes, um, we looked at other academies. There's the French Georges Municipal, Municipal Academy. And there was the Anarundo Municipal Academy. And these are academies, the people that really want to be the police can put themselves through these academies. Are they self-sponsored themselves and other departments can pick them up? Um, we, instead of, you know, we, we were looking through everywhere we could. Recruiting is extremely difficult. But what we found is, as a lot of the people that went to those academies really wanted to get in law enforcement for the right reason. So we were able to pull some of our new recruits, uh, from those two academies. And what we benefited from that is, although they were brand new officers as far as their experience, we didn't have to put them through a six month academy because they put them through themselves. So what we've tried to do is we try to expand our recruiting base, uh, to make sure that we can, uh, you know, get a diverse workforce. And you get officers that speak different languages, but we found that that was a platform that was, was, was really beneficial for us. So we'll continue to look at that, that, those two academies as, as, as a way to find applicants that, that really want to be here for the right reason.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate that. Now you mentioned the mediation question and that's something that doesn't depend upon reforms of the law enforcement officers bill of rights here at the state level. So I think you said, we're getting into the final stages of that. Is there anything outstanding that we could help you with to bring in the mediation? Can you give us a estimate of how much longer it might take to get there?
Although we don't have, the official policy hasn't been approved through the official channel. We, we were going to use it anyway for, for, um, two recent cases we had. Um, unfortunately, the one case involving the sign, uh, the young lady, um, wasn't interested. She, um, felt that she really got her voice heard on that particular issue. But we're looking at, if we have a case now, we're going to go ahead and do it. But we're just trying to make sure that the policy mirrors up with what we're doing. So really there's no impediment, we just need to, to make sure that the policy is going through the process.
The council can, can help. And we, I think, uh, I just speak for myself, but I think, uh, it would be great to have that in as a, something that members of the public understood was available.
I, I, I think where the council can help and most importantly, our state delegation can help, is pushing at the state level, some of LEOVR that's already implemented. And that's allowing a civilian to sit on a, uh, LEOVR hearing board. The state level has not given the training to, um, agencies to be able to do that. That is currently, um, in the LEOVR that will allow that. Now for full transparency, um, that civilian would not vote. So there's still a lot of work that needs to be done with that. They wouldn't, right now, uh, there are three people all sworn that sit on a trial board or if this is just an officer has sustained charges of wrongdoing, they can then elect to go to an LEOVR hearing board. So what the state is looking for is allowing a civilian to sit as a voting member. So if you want to help us, um, I think pushing a delegate twenties, um, initiatives, for transparency and for discipline. I give the example of if the George Floyd incident happened here in the city of Tacoma Park, because of because of LEOVR, I would not have been immediately able to fire all four of, of those officers. I would have been able to suspend, suspend them without pay, and they would have been able to go through this investigative process and, and then elect to have a trial board and so on and so forth. So those are the limitations I have as chief. So I, I think if people have not followed the District 20 delegation recommendation, they need to engage on that because that's what's, if something's holding our hands at, at, at a city council level and at a state level, that would be the most important engagement tool I think people can do at this.
Okay. And, and I think for those in the community who haven't yet had a chance to look at that, um, presentation, I think it's well worth it. And I agree, and I'm glad our District 20 folks are fighting for that. My only point is on the mediation, we control that ourselves. So.
Yes, sir.
There's two other things, and then, then I'll, I'll stop because I know, I know it is getting late and I want to respect, uh, anyone else who wants to comment. Um, I've gotten a lot of questions about the ERT, the Emergency Response Team General, what's presented as militarization. I know you said you've got rid of some of the material that we got from Department of Defense, and I was asked specifically about the long range acoustic devices. Can you just say a few words about the utility of those, what we do? Do we need an ERT? What are the pros and cons of that, et cetera?
Well, we don't have any of those long range devices. We don't have any military IDOD equipment, um, inactive service. Um, years ago, we were given two rifles. They are ceremonial rifles that we use for our honor guard. They are not active rifles. They can't shoot. That's the only DOD equipment we have. Years ago, before I got here as chief, they sent all that back during the Obama administration. So I, I'm not, I was never an advocate of getting DOD equipment, and all of the DOD equipment that was inactive service, we no longer have. Now, the question about ERT, um, needs to be a long discussion because do you want to give up that important role to the county or the state police? Because if we don't have those units, we lose command and control on incidents. Uh, the one significant incident we had last year at the Tacoma Overbook, we had command and control because we had our own emergency response team. And we took a very cautious approach. Um, I can tell you, there were other units that wanted to make entry, and that could have been catastrophic and due to the circumstances. So that discussion can be had, but I want the community to understand that they are losing command and control of those situations within the city, either the county police or the state police or another police department. And when, uh, ERT or SWAT units come into a jurisdiction, we lose command and control, which means we will not be making the decisions on entry and all of those other things. So I'm absolutely open to the discussion of whether or not we need an ERT here in the city. But understand that there are consequences if we don't.
Well, I, I don't know myself what I would say. Um, I suppose if, if there's a question between that and the type of mental health and other staff that we've talked about, the latter could be, could be more important. But that gets to my, gets to my last question. So, um, in terms of budget increases we've seen in, in, during your tenure, say, for police, um, for the police department overall, is that mainly in, in the personnel area? And, and secondly, around this question of separating out the sort of community service component, social work, as some people call it, from more traditionally, uh, seen law enforcement. Um, is there a concern at all on your part, in addition to the budget, if you can talk about that? But is there a concern about, um, the police are just more focused on law enforcement than when they do go out into the community for a legitimate response, then they're, that's their focus? And we might even lose some of what they now do, which is sort of social work oriented. And I think of, you know, the division now between immigration services and ICE. I know different personnel did it, but when now agency was the INS, they kind of did both. Now ICE is just all enforcement and that's it. And I think to the detriment of so many people. So I, I just wonder, it's more of a philosophical question, but is there a potential danger in saying police, all you're going to do is respond to violent or dangerous incidents? Because inevitably, they might still get involved in some others. A long question, sorry, a long, two questions.
But, but it, but a very, very good question, and I touched on this earlier. I don't see giving up community policing for having a different approach to responding to mental health calls or certain calls for service. I think it's extremely important that we're still, uh, guardians, not warriors. And I think the stuff that we do already, the national night outs, the community academies, going out to community events are so important that we'll still keep that going. I don't see the focus of the police department changing just because we now have, um, a social work component or something else to address certain calls. But yes, I really do worry of the police departments that will become solely focused on enforcement. They're not going to get the people that we attract to policing that want to engage with people and help people. So then the enforcement arm of this public safety model, yeah, would be those aggressive people. And then you still would be having the same problems. So I think we still need to stress the guardian approach to, to these type of calls for service, the de-escalation, uh, training, the implicit bias training. And people need to understand this as well. Even if we have social workers, we still, everyone has implicit bias and everyone has, you know, there is racism in, 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 in our, our mental health professionals. Um, you know, more people die of color from malpractice due to racism, uh, than they do with the hands of the police. So we still need to understand that even if we do come up with another component, we still need to understand the underlying issue of racism. But going back to your original question, uh, yeah, that concerns me. It doesn't concern me within our police department because our focus is still going to remain as that guardian approach. And yet we might be handling more traditional police calls for service, but that doesn't mean that we want to coffee with a cop. That doesn't mean we want to do breakfast with Santa. That doesn't mean we want to participate with Man Up or our schools. That doesn't mean that we won't have national night out. All of those community outreach things will remain. We will just have a different model for responding to certain calls for service. And I, I could see that in other jurisdictions where now, okay, all they do is, I, I am just now that warrior who goes out and handles calls for service. Um, that's not the model I want to see here.
Okay. And then just something, while you mentioned it's 90% of the budget. So the extent it's gone up in the last few years, that staff salaries or is that in benefits or is that other components of what the department does?
Well, I will say, since I, since I took over as police, we've, we've added one sworn FTE, um, in the police department as far as, and, and we've added half a parking enforcement agent which pays for itself. And I'll let, uh, Ms. Lumbow comment a little bit further on the budget as far as the increase.
Thank you. And that's, the, um, increase in the FTEs, um, is, is modest. The pay scales have been, um, consistent with other departments. Um, and, you know, one of the things that I think, when I look back over the last couple of years, we can get more documentation, a couple of things that have, um, cost some money that weren't personnel. For example, um, in the coming budget is, um, upgrading our, so we have in car cameras in every vehicle, in every police vehicle, and the, and the video, uh, storage that's related to that. That's part of our commitment to transparency. Uh, we also had, um, more money spent on recruitment because we were really trying to get the right kind of recruitment process and, and attract some folks. That was a couple of years ago, and we've kept that up. Um, other than that, we have not spent, if you look at the, kind of the operations side, the non-personnel expenses, uh, it's very small increases, um, and some decreases. So it's been, we've been very, I mean, I'm, I'm pretty tight when it comes to those things anyway. And, you know, we don't have a lot of equipment and special, special things for the police. So, um, mostly we've been focused on how to implement, um, getting really good staff because the most important part of policing is the good staff.
All right. Thank you, May. Appreciate it. Thank you, Chief, and, and Susan also.
Great. Um, seeing no other hands up this evening. I know, um, there probably is still a lot of questions, um, to come. As we said, this was sort of a, a first night to kind of go over some questions people had over the last few weeks. I appreciate the, um, the chief and Reverend Gal Fisher Stewart for joining us this evening. This wasn't something that had been on our agenda, um, a, a couple of weeks ago. Um, the police chief does come and provide an annual report to the city council every year. Um, that report is available on the, um, city website. So, um, if people want more details on some of the things that the chief talked about tonight, you can find, um, some more detail in the, um, in that annual report, um, as well as, um, uh, all of the, um, general orders and police, police policies are available on the website. Um, so you can see them there as well. Um, and so, um, just wanted to point that out to folks because we're going to continue these conversations. Um, I think as Councilmember Siemens and a number of other people mentioned, the idea of having some type of task force, um, in the near future that would do a deeper dive into some of the topics that we began talking about this evening. Um, in particular, um, as the chief mentioned when he first started talking, the, um, 2017 resolution that we passed, thinking about the direction we wanted to see the, uh, police department go and outline some of the things that we were looking for in a police chief, I think was very beneficial to have at that time, the process we went through to, um, create that resolution. Um, and so in my mind, I'm also thinking about one of the outcomes, um, or one of the things to work towards is really looking at, um, updating that and going back to that 2017 resolution so that we can, um, as a council, think about what are the goals, what, what are the things that, um, we want to set up for our police department? And so, um, those are the things that I, we will work together. Um, and I hope people continue to, um, send in their questions and, um, we will, um, be coming back to this topic. So, um, I think with that, I just want to say, once again, thank you to the chief. Uh, and we're looking forward to getting more information from you. Um, and thank you, everyone, for the conversation tonight. Um, we have one other item on our work session, and that is an update on elections.
Yes. Hi. So, um, we have Arthur David Olson here tonight to give you an update on the Board of Elections' most recent meeting and a recommendation that, uh, the board has for the city council. So, Arthur.
I'll take it away. Thank you.
Yes.
So, uh, the Board of Elections did meet this last Thursday night. Uh, we were mindful of the discussion that the city council had the night before that and carefully considered the matter of how to proceed with the November election. We have concluded that the best thing to do here is to go ahead with a predominantly vote by mail election. That's based mostly on our desire to ensure the safety both of voters and of election workers. Uh, secondarily, because of the concerns that folks have about the virus, we're realizing that while we already had a challenging job in finding enough election workers to cover five precincts rather than covering just the city hall, and would be doing it in competition with the county, the fact that people will have trepidations about being election workers in a pandemic environment makes that job even harder. So we believe that, uh, we will be more able to find all the election workers we need for a vote by mail election rather than for the traditional election. We, of course, had hoped to do whatever it was that the state and county decided to do in terms of the election because that's the easiest for the voters. They get to go to one place and do one thing. Improvidently, uh, the governor has decided to wait on the results of the, uh, primary and the election process in the primary to make a determination as how to proceed in November, and has indicated that the governor believes there's plenty of time to make a decision. Well, if there's plenty of time for the state, that means that there would be very little time for the city in terms of the planning it needed to do. So another consideration here is that we do want to have a concrete, uh, plan for moving forward at this point. Because at this point, the election is less than five months away. Uh, you should have received, uh, the, uh, document from the board chair, Brian Ernst, which detailed some of the other considerations in the recommendation. And I'd be happy to answer any questions about that document or what I've just said. And my apologies, uh, Brian had to leave the meeting early. So you're getting the B team rather than the A team in this case.
You mean he had to leave late because this is.
Well, yes. I'm just thankful that I'm not getting up at 5:45 tomorrow to go out and handle ballots for the county because that job is done now. So.
Good. Uh, excellent.
So the, the document that, um, Mr. Arthur David Olson mentioned is posted on the website.
Oh, okay.
Agenda page.
Okay. Did not look at that. Missed that.
Um, went up very late.
Okay. So we will look at that. Um, and I guess, what, uh, thank you for the recommendation and the work of the Board of Elections. Um, I guess I, I'll ask this of the city clerk, what is, what are the next steps then that the council needs to take after getting this recommendation?
So the council is going to, um, need to consider a, a charter amendment. And I think what it, it will largely entail is removing some things from the charter completely because they don't necessarily have to be in the charter. So the city attorney will be taking a look at that, and I will have information on a schedule for that shortly. Uh, there may be some minor code revisions necessary, but the, the main, uh, issue to deal with is the charter because of the time it takes for that charter amendment. And then I will be, um, I am, have been actively researching vendors to do the mailing, to, to mail the ballots for us. And I haven't, um, don't have a recommendation yet, but I am working on that for, for, to recommend to the board and to the council.
Great.
I can mention that perhaps the most substantive charter change would involve when it is that people have to have their ballots mailed in by. Currently, it's true that, uh, with the state elections, it is, your vote is counted if it is postmarked by election day. Up to now, for city elections, it has been true that you have to have your ballot received at the city by election day in order for it to be counted. There is certainly some value in having the rules for both the city and the state be the same. Uh, in the past, it has not been as important because there has been a relatively low volume of mail-in voting absentee votes. But if we're going to a, an election where it is predominantly vote by mail, then there is more of an impetus to get those rules lined up. Um, it's not a deal killer. If the city council does not want to make that change, we would simply have slightly different rules than the state does. But it is probably a desirable.
Mm-hmm. Um, so that change would be, uh, I believe in the city code. The, the important change in the city charter is the date when the, um, the results have to be certified, which right now is essentially in 48 hours after an election, which would not be possible in the, it wouldn't be reasonable in the event of vote by mail. So, uh, and additionally, the council would take office pursuant to the charter, as it is today, would take office on November 12th, the day after Veterans Day. And again, that's, um, unlikely to happen in this scenario. So those timelines need to be adjusted and possibly removed from the charter altogether. But that'll be a recommendation from the city attorney.
Okay. Great. Um, Councilman DiBala has a question.
Yes, thank you. I'll, I'll try to make this brief. Um, did I understand you to say that the governor has not indicated when he might make a decision about this?
Uh, that was true at least as of two days ago.
Okay. Um, and go ahead.
I was just reading news reports where the, um, the state board, um, the, uh, state election director requested that the decision be made by the middle of June. So, and the state board meets tomorrow.
Okay. Um, and I understood there was some significant percentage of folks in this last mail-in primary that still showed up in person.
Yes.
Yeah. So would, 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 would the city just have the one, have the one side at the city hall? Or would there be some arrangement for people to vote in the five places on the day if we went with the mail-in election?
Uh, the Board of Elections has discussed that matter. Uh, we would certainly, uh, expect to have, uh, the ability to cast your vote at the, uh, community center in any case. We have been thinking that one possibility for the polling places to have, uh, ballot drop offs there. We would, of course, expect a smaller. We would, of course, expect a smaller number of folks voting in person.
Yeah. Good point. Ballot drop-offs. And I see that you are concerned about vendors getting booked out. And that's one reason you want us to decide sooner rather than later.
Yes. We are.
Not cut it too close.
Jurisdictions will switch.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much for hanging in there.
Councilwoman Kostick, you keep turning your, your hand, you keep putting your hand up and down.
I know. I keep having a question, and then it gets answered, and I figure, whatever. It's too late. I'll do it later. It's, it's great. I think it's a good plan. My question was the, the, the word predominantly vote-by-mail, which I think I now understand, which is, it will be a vote-by-mail, but people also have the option to go to the community center. Is that correct?
That's correct. We will, in our efforts to publicize the election, say, we're really interested in this being for folks who absolutely need this, folks who need assistance in voting, for example, or folks who are doing same-day registration. We do want to, just for safety's sake, minimize the number of folks who show up in person.
Thank you.
Okay. All right.
So I guess, Mayor Stewart, so it might be helpful to know, I, I'm not hearing any strong concerns about moving in this direction. I guess if there are any, we should know it now because we need to act, we need to take steps.
All right. Well, why don't we do what we did earlier with the compensation? All those in favor of moving forward with the consideration of moving our elections to predominantly mail, raise your hand.
Mayor, before you, can I just ask one quick question? So are we going to see like a written proposal on this? Or I, I, I'll raise my hand, but I didn't know if we're, what we're, what we're saying is going to happen based on raising our hands now.
Right. Well, you, you will hear more. And in fact, the mayor has added to every agenda from now to eternity an, an update on planning for the election. So you will, you will hear more. You'll hear more next week.
Yeah. So now you're, all right. So yes, so we have consensus on the council to move forward in this direction. And as the clerk said, I, you know, these are important things, and there's a lot of information we need to keep sharing. So every council meeting, we will be doing a check-in on elections to make sure that people are aware that we're having elections this fall and gives the opportunity for council to ask questions about the process that we just discussed as well as just any, anything else because there's a, a lot of materials that need to be put up on the website and other things. So. Cool. All right. I think that's all our business for tonight. So thank you very much, everyone. And yeah, we'll see you next week. Thank you. Good night. We're adjourned.